Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for September the 23rd, 2019. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Zachary Urban.
Present.
David Keeter.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a proclamation to designate the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I'd like to invite Deb Bitner and Scott Shields with Family Tree to join me at the podium. This is a proclamation to designate the month of October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence imparts countless, impacts countless Coloradans without regard to age, race, religion, or economic status, as victims suffer at the hands of a spouse or partner, it affects their children's, families, and the entire communities. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge is committed to the reduction of domestic violence and the health, safety, and welfare of its residents, and whereas Wheat Ridge Police Department is committed to providing assistance to victims and witnesses of crime and other traumatic events through victim assistance partnerships and awareness-related efforts and events, and whereas Wheat Ridge joins with others across Colorado and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence and shares the worthy goals of this month-long observance, and likewise supports the work of public and private entities that strive to provide the best coordinated response to domestic violence in communities across the state, sending a loud and clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in the city of Wheat Ridge. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Wheat Ridge, I Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Wheat Ridge, and witness thereof on this 23rd day of September 2019, Bud Starke, Mayor.
Thank you, members of the city council, for not just pronouncing this and proclaiming it Domestic Violence Awareness Month next month here in Wheat Ridge, but sending a very strong message about what that means in our community. That's very important to us at Family Tree and to the community in which we're invested in making a better place for everyone. I'm Scott Shields with Family Tree, and Family Tree has been here in the metro area for over 43 years. We started here in Wheat Ridge, in Jefferson County, in 1976. We focus on the issues of child abuse and neglect, domestic violence, and homelessness, and specifically the interrelated nature of those, of those three issues. We know that when somebody comes to our organization and needs help in one of these areas, very often, they need help in another specific service area that Family Tree can offer. We know that when especially women and their children are fleeing domestic violence, that is still today one of the most common reasons why they're experiencing homelessness in our community, an issue that I know is also very important here in the city of Wheat Ridge. And so, we really appreciate the city taking a very strong stance on this and proclaiming October Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I'd like to ask Deb Bitner, our Division Director of Domestic Bound Services, to say a little bit more about specifically the impact our Domestic Bound Services programs have in our community.
He's taller than I am. Yes, thank you so much for inviting us here and for making the proclamation that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I can tell you that last year, our Roots of Courage served over 340 women and children, providing over 9,600 nights of shelter. Our legal team provided assistance to over 700 individuals, helping them with temporary protection orders, permanent protection orders, and navigating the domestic relations cases through the court system, which can be very complicated. Our domestic violence outreach team was out in the community, and one of the most important components of their work is prevention, and they provided prevention education to over 400 youth in the Jefferson County schools. And our Parenting Time Program provided services to over 200 families, allowing a safe place for non-residential parents to have quality time with their children. Most of those cases are involving domestic violence. And so, I am very proud to say that we, together as a community, are having a significant impact on survivors of domestic violence. And for Wheat Ridge to take a stand and say, "October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we are not going to tolerate domestic violence in our community," is very powerful. The numbers say a lot. I feel like stories say more. So I always say, I like to, I wish I could take the before and after picture of when a client, survivor, comes into the Roots of Courage Shelter, and they're broken, they're shattered, they are indeed homeless. Recently, we had a mom and a couple of kids come in, and she had, she had no idea where to turn. She, she was immediately connected with an advocate who listened, let her tell her story. We were able to then connect her with our legal team that helped her to navigate on how to get a protection order for herself and her children. Through that process, we were also able to connect her with our Parenting Time Program so that the father of their children could have supervised visits with their kiddos. There was also child abuse involved in that case. Eventually, we were also able to connect her with our homelessness program, and through a grant that is specific for survivors of domestic violence, we were able to help her and her children find a more permanent housing solution. So, that's when we do our happy dance. And thank you so much. Excited to be a part of this here tonight, and always excited to share our stories, and anytime one of you would like a tour of our shelter, we'd be happy to do that, and thank you very much for your commitment to the work that we do.
We will move to approval of the minutes, which we don't, we don't have any minutes in our package, I don't think, so we will then, approval of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda that anyone wishes to make? Okay, we will move to the agenda as is. We move to our citizens' right to speak on any item not on the agenda. Citizens may sign up to speak on this for maximum of three minutes by signing the, signing the public comment roster, but we will also ask at the end of that also, if anyone else. We have, we have also, at the end of our meeting, a study session, and in accordance with our council rules, we will take the study session comment after our, after our meeting comments. So, I will read out the name of our speakers, and, sorry to speak, two, and when I reach, read out your name, if you would come to the podium and adjust the mic so that we can hear you, and give us your first name and last name, if you would please spell your last name and give us your address. And we have lights that will time us on this. The green light will first appear when the speaker commences after you've given us your name. The green light flashes when you have 30 seconds left. The yellow light appears when you have 15 seconds left, and the red light, when the red light comes on, your time is over. So if you would please conclude your remarks, and, and we'll move to the next speaker. And my apologies upfront, if I, if I don't pronounce your name correctly, but we'll have an opportunity for you to correct me at the, at the podium. So our first speaker is Lynn Ann Husinga, I think, and Ally Carde on deck. We'll see how I did.
Not too bad. My name is Lynn Ann Hizing.
Very good.
Yep. I, my address is 9884 Fairwood Street in Littleton. I am here speaking today as the Executive Director for Severe Weather Shelter Network. Severe Weather Shelter Network, Family Cold Weather Share Shelter, and Family Promise are active members of heading home in Jefferson County, and together we provide shelter for families and individuals utilizing 25 local churches in Jefferson County for overnight shelter space. I'm speaking to you tonight because our neighbors, in need of such space, are threatened by the real possibility that in the near future, churches may not be able to offer their space due to the differing interpretations of fire and building code concerns in some cities where we offer this overnight shelter need. I'm asking for your intervention to help ensure that these church shelters continue to be available in Jefferson County. There are men, women, children, and even babies who depend on these church shelters to stay alive and safe through the night, especially on bitter cold nights. Severe Weather Shelter Network has always worked directly with the fire department to ensure safe shelter practices employed in our church settings, including making sure appropriate exit signage is in place, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors are utilized, and providing a fire watch overnight by having at least one volunteer awake at all times in the overnight hours. In the 2018-19 shelter season, over 600 men, women, children, and babies in Jefferson County were provided shelter on life-threatening winter nights through motel vouchers, Severe Weather Shelter Network, and the Emergency Shelter Program in Evergreen. On any given shelter night, there are only 85 spaces available in churches between Severe Weather Shelter Network and the Evergreen Shelter Program. When we are full, other overnight sheltering options are sought out, including placing people in motels. Many of the available motel rooms are not clean or well-maintained. There are no meals or healthy fellowship offered, and these motels are no place for children and babies or men and women to feel safe. And yet, the reality is that these motels fill up quickly on life-threatening nights, and funds for placing people in the motels run out early in the season. In fact, this coming season, there is no funding for motels. I'm asking you, as elected officials in this city, to work with your code officials to implement local code amendment offering clarification that clearly allows churches and buildings to be utilized as overnight shelter for this much-needed opportunity. Response is rather urgent, as the severe weather season begins October 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ally Carde and Bruce Crawl on deck.
My name's Ally Carde, last name Card, C-A-R-D, and I live at 1829 East Jewell Avenue in Denver, Colorado. I'm the Executive Director at Family Promise of Greater Denver. I'm here this evening representing the organization and all the families that we serve. Family Promise of Greater Denver provides temporary shelter to families in 24 different faith communities throughout the metro area, two of which are right here in Wheat Ridge. We're a national model, so we're all across the country, and we've been in Denver since 1997. We've served well over 2,000 families through shelter. I believe it's important for y'all to know that Family Promise is the only family-specific, year-round emergency shelter program provided in Jefferson County for any of the families that need it. That's to say, there are 15 emergency shelter beds for children and their families in your community, year-round. Annually, we do a point-in-time count, and this past year, in January 2019, 63 families were counted on one night in January. 236 people in families. In 2019, were sleeping on the streets, in their car, and in shelters. That's 54% of the people who were counted as homeless on that one night in Jefferson County this year. Our model of sheltering families is being threatened, as fire and building codes are interpreted in such ways that don't allow us to provide this necessity in your community. If this model of shelter is no longer viable, this community will lose all of its emergency shelter beds. I come before you tonight to ensure that our children and our families remain safe within our community, having their basic need of shelter met. This model of sheltering is not only proven to be effective and provides long-term housing solutions for families, it's also cost-efficient for our communities. Our 2018 shelter budget for case management, transportation, laundry, showers, computers, and volunteer coordination was a total of just over $280,000. This, the in-kind support from our volunteers and from the space that we're able to utilize, totals almost $2 million a year. And those are costs that we don't have to incur as a shelter, or as a nonprofit, or as a greater community. 63% of the families we served in 2018 left our shelter program more stably housed, showing that effective case management and supportive services ensure that families transition out of homelessness and stay housed. My ask to you this evening is to work with the building and fire departments to amend the building code so that congregations are legally able to provide shelter and support to our most vulnerable neighbors while keeping them safe. I do believe that together, we can end homelessness, one family at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bruce Crawl and Stacy Minkin on deck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Bruce Crawl. I'm the Fire Marshal for West Metro Fire at 433 South Allison Parkway. I'm here just to confirm what has just been brought to your attention, that the current building code and fire code in the city of Wheat Ridge doesn't allow for that kind of activity in churches. Churches are designed and built for a different kind of activity other than sleeping at night by what could be numerous people. So what, what I feel would be a way forward is for the, the council to direct the, the building staff and myself to, to consider the risks on both sides of the issue, because there are risks on both sides, and for the council to consider a way forward that either by changing the code and allowing the use of churches for shelters for the homeless, or choosing a different path. But as it stands now, your legally adopted code does not allow for sleeping and sheltering in churches overnight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Minkin and Dale Squillis on deck.
Good evening, council members. First, a big thank you to all of you for allowing us to speak openly with you. My name is Stacy Minkin, M-I-N-T-K-E-N. I live here in Wheat Ridge at 3071 Union Street in Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Myself and eight of my neighbors, five of which are here tonight, wanted to speak to you about something that we feel is extremely important happening in our neighborhood. Recently, a house has been refurbished, and it's now a monarch sober living home. And first, let me say, I am not here for anything other than the situation in our neighborhood. I commend anyone who wants to take back charge of their life and, and fix anything that is wrong. I personally have friends and family who have gone through addictive situations, so this is not about that. It's about something in our neighborhood that we cannot seem to grasp or understand. So the monarch sober living strategy, as I understand it, was built in 2015 based on two men who knew that they needed something outside of the norm to recover. So they built a standard monarch living sober home, which has a lot of standards which we don't seem to have happening in our neighborhood, some of which is a curfew. At 11:00 PM, everyone is to be in, in the home. There is supposed to be one, one sex at the home, either male or female. That is not happening in our neighborhood. There is supposed to be regulation and check-in about checking for sobriety, and we don't know if that's happening, but I can personally testify, living right next door to the home, that there is alcohol going into the home. So much of which my teenager made the comment, "There's going to be a big blowout at the neighbor's house this weekend," so very, very concerning for me, given the fact I have three teenagers that live right next door. The other thing that's very concerning to me is the secrecy. All of us have tried to talk to our neighbor about it. They've lived there approximately a month, and there seems to be no open dialogue about what's happening. When I saw the neighbors moving in, very friendly, I went over, introduced myself, wanted to meet the new neighbors, because I have lived in this neighborhood 21 years, I got the impression that it was a young couple moving in, and I made the comment, "We're very super excited to meet you, because we're all very close." It comes to find out that that is not the case. The people that bought the home don't live there, it's the sobriety home. And again, that's a, a commend them for doing that, but it's not the premise that was introduced to us as neighbors. So there's a lot of secrecy going on, which is concerning. The other thing that I, I do want to point out too, in, in addition to the secrecy, there seems to be something mischievous about the way it was presented to us as neighbors. I don't know the regulation or zoning for this type of situation. I'm studying it myself, but if, I would ask the council to really think about and listen to my neighbors as, as we share our stories, if there's something the council could do to notify neighbors when this happens, rather than find out when 12 people are living right next door to you, and there's now 10 cars, 11 cars every night that come and go at all hours of the night, including 2:00 AM. So again, my ask to the council is just to listen to our stories tonight, and really think about how can we fix what's happening in our neighborhood, if possible, and if not, in future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dale Squillis and Ashley Holland on deck.
Hi, my name is Dale Squillis. I maybe signed the wrong piece of paper there. I think maybe I was supposed to sign the yellow one, but talking about the, the terrible noise that's coming out of that bottling plant over on Ridge Road, it just goes 24/7. We've been in our home probably 15 years, and we knew the bottling plant was there when we moved in, and it would create some noise, but it was very, very tolerable. And last winter, the plant decided to add some new equipment, which is like doubled the noise, and we can't even enjoy our patio anymore. I can even hear it through the fan in my bathroom in the middle of the night, and it never, ever shuts off. So it's a very, very frustrating situation for us, so we're, I'm hoping that you guys can maybe get with the bottling company and have them find a solution to the noise, because it's just pretty much intolerable right now. We can't even enjoy our house anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Holland and Charles Parnell on deck.
Ashley Holland, H-O-L-L-A-N-D, 2852 Depew Street in Wheat Ridge, and I'm here tonight as representative of Local Works to give a quick update about our most recent event. Many of you were able to join us. We had Ridge Fest on September 7th. It was a huge success. We had four bluegrass bands, classic cars, chalk art, artisan market. We always do a kids' craft, and this year we added our adult craft tent, and we had a succulent planter class with Al's Pine Garden, and a wall hanging class with Wonderco, both of which are Wheat Ridge businesses. And throughout the event, we actually partnered with 29 Wheat Ridge businesses and organizations. Some of these include the Cultural Commission, Brewery Ricoli, Pierogies Factory, and St. Peter and Paul, to name a couple. And so we just, I just wanted to come tonight and thank you all so much for your support of that event, and thank city staff for all of their help, and the Wheat Ridge Police Department, Parks and Rec Department, and Public Works for really helping make that event a great success. Also, this morning, our new Executive Director, Kate Cook, joined us, and we're so excited to have her. We'll have a public reception on October 23rd and email you all of the, all of the information, so please come out and meet Kate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charles Parnell and Edward Fegley on deck.
Good evening. I'm Charles Parnell. I live at 5354 Newcombe Street, and like Mr. Squillis, I put my name initially on the wrong list. I'm here also about the bottling plant. I also purchased my home 15 years ago, and I saw the bottling plant there, and I was concerned about it, and I actually stood on the lot that I was thinking about, and I couldn't, and went multiple times and never, ever heard that plant. I moved into the house, and didn't realize that the loudest time was in the middle of the night. Didn't think about going to the lot in the middle of the night. So, even before, there were some problems, and I thought, "Well, they, they got me on this one." But last year, when they changed things, things got much, much louder. But last year, when they changed things, things got much, much louder. I have problems sleeping. I know it's important for everyone to sleep, and they can't do their jobs at night. It's really, really important for me. It can be a health problem not to get good sleep night after night after night. And I know everyone built around them, but now, this is, it's kind of old history. It's 15, 20 years later. When they make a change, they know everyone's there now. They should not be able to greatly increase the volume of the noise, knowing that they have neighborhood all around them now. So that really, it needs to be addressed. I know they've made some changes. Sometimes the day, it does seem better. However, you can still hear it a great deal. Many nights, it is much worse than it is during the day. But I personally, and I probably have a little more sensitive hearing than most, when I'm, even in my house, I can hear that thing all the time now. And there are some nights where, I live, my bedroom's on the east side of our house. I've got a son that's in college. His room is on the northwest side of the house. I actually leave my room and go sleep in his room on the northwest side, where it's a little less noisy, so I can get a decent night's sleep. So this is something we really need to find a solution to. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Fegley and Deborah Young on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for allowing me to speak tonight for my allocated three minutes. I'm grateful. My name is Edward Flegler, F-L-E-E-G-L-E-R, and I live at 3812 Taft Court here in Wheat I'm a retired internist and geriatrician. A geriatrician is someone who takes care of older folks, and I enjoyed my 30 years of doing so. But I'm also a fellow of the American College of Physicians. And as a fellow, the College of Physicians has issued a white paper on the health impacts of climate change and global warming. So I'm really here more for perhaps the younger generation and the children who live in our wonderful community, and I want to see them to grow up in a world where the house isn't on fire. One year ago, I went to the Parks and Recreation meeting and learned that there was an algal bloom in Prospect Lake on the Greenway, an algal bloom. And I asked to see the report. There were some strains of algae that are potentially toxic, and I learned that it was going to be monitored. I sent an email to the head of Parks and Recreation, expressing my public health concern as an internist, about what this could mean, what it could mean. And I went back to the Parks and Recreation meeting, because I heard that there's a new head of Parks and Recreation, and I wanted to hear what the new head was thinking about the awareness of this algal bloom, and what it could potentially mean for our community, but also what opportunities this community could have. The Amazon is being described as the lungs of the world. The Greenway is the lungs of Wheat Ridge, the lungs of Wheat Ridge. And I walk there very, very often and look around at what could potentially happen in terms of planting, ecosystem development, monitoring of the water. I realize the water rights belong to cores, but perhaps doing at a community level what we saw last week, all over the country with young people striking, striking, and demanding that something be done about climate change, something be done. So what would be a potential solution? Because it's one thing to complain, but it's another thing to look at a challenge as an opportunity. And, you know, we've heard about the glass plant. There are other businesses within Wheat Ridge where private-public programs could be created to elevate the quality of life and the quality of the trail system within the Greenway to help and potentially balance. Ecosystems make oxygen that offset carbon footprint, and I'm all for, I am very much all for growth within Wheat Ridge. But if we balance it, we create a better community.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to bring that awareness to City Council, and I realize I'm at red, but I hope any ruling that comes in the future includes climate change and sustainability as a part of any ruling or changes to the laws of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Young and Colette Beneski on deck.
My name is Deborah Young. I live at 12064 West 31st Place. I'm here tonight to talk about the sober living residence that was just put in next door to me. My husband and myself live next door to a home that, for the past two years, has been in the process of being remodeled. This past July, the project was finished and the home was sold. In July, the new residents moved in. We thought perhaps this was a large family or a roommate situation due to the number of cars that were parked on both sides of the street. As a concerned neighbor, I inquired with the city of Wheat Ridge and learned the home is now a sober living facility, a group home. It is my understanding the home is permitted and protected by the federal government and the Fair Housing Act. It is not my intention to discriminate against this home. I want a realistic number of residents living in the home to ensure the neighborhood's safety. When I inquired at the city as to how many women could live there, I was told it remains an unregulated situation. On Saturday, September 21st, at 6:00 AM, I saw someone digging on the side of the home to put another egress basement window, I assume to put in another bedroom. I questioned the R1 zoning for a group home that has as many as 10 or more people living there is different from an R1 single-family home. Section 26, 205, Residential 1 District, R1, the intent and purpose. This district is established to provide high-quality, safe, quiet, and stable low-density residential neighborhoods, and to prohibit activities of any nature which are incompatible with low-density residential character. Our residential block has many young children playing and riding bikes in the street, which has become a safety issue. The children were always riding on the side of the street, but now have to go around the middle because of the many cars parked on the sides of the street. A few of the sober living residents make U-turns before parking in front of their home, which is another safety concern. Although I understand the need for sober living facility, I am sympathetic for these young women who need these facilities and wish them a full recovery. The city of Wheat Ridge, the state of Colorado, and the federal government should consider all the residents of this neighborhood community that will be affected by this new sober living facility, and make regulations that are fair to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Colette Beneski and Kim, and I think it's Jones, but I could be way off, on deck.
Hi, I'm Colette Beneski, B-E-N-E-S-K-I. I live at 12083 West 31st Place, and I'm also here tonight to talk about the sober living home that has moved into our neighborhood. I think the two people who have spoken before me have provided a lot of background, but one of my main concerns is, who is protecting the property value that I have in my home, and who's protecting the character of our neighborhood? I understand the need for sober living homes, but it only takes a quick Google search to find stories about sober living homes that are run by unscrupulous actors who profit off their vulnerable occupants. Reform is clearly desperately needed to provide residents of sober living homes, rather than the owners of these facilities, the protections intended under the ADA and the FHA. Some sort of supervision and oversight of these facilities is a must, and it seems to clearly be needed in our neighborhood. Local government does have a role to play in this. The work that you do as elected officials in our community is just really important in terms of setting a level playing field for these homes. I encourage our council members to look into the ordinances that were recently established in Prescott, Arizona, that provide for regulatory oversight over sober living homes without breaching the Americans with Disabilities Act or the FHA.
Thank you. Our next speaker, I believe, is Kim Jones and Abby Bugler on deck.
I'm Kim James. Sorry for the bad penmanship.
Okay, thank you.
I live at 12063 West 31st Place as well, and I'm neighbors to the previous people that have been talking about the sober living place. And I moved to Applewood two and a half years ago after adopting out of foster care, so I understand humanity. I have assisted that has been in a sober living house at one point in her life, so I have incredible compassion for individuals like this. And this meeting started out on humanity, talking about shelters, and I don't doubt that there's one person in this room that doesn't want to see people heal and get well. My concern for the house in our neighborhood was, first of all, it lacked transparency when it first came. As one of the residents has already said, that the owner of the home told us that he and his wife, or his fiancee, would be living in the house. And he specifically told me that he would be bringing cookies around to all the neighborhood people and introducing himself that he and his wife would be living in the house. So unfortunately, this whole situation didn't evolve out of truthfulness. So we all had to kind of figure out on our own, after we saw multiple cars. We're seeing up to nine to 11 cars parked on the street in front of their house, in front of our neighbor's house, and multiple people coming in all hours of the night. And my concern is, when I moved here, I wanted a quiet neighborhood. We all want quiet neighborhoods. My guess is, we all live in Wheat Ridge, where we come to this area of the city for a reason. And this neighborhood, my daughters, that are four and five, can no longer ride their bikes in that area of the street, because there's so many cars. There's insidious drainage coming from the house that also, too, is a concern, that also leads our children not to be able to play in that area. So I feel like that the lack of transparency and the lack of the ability for us to have a voice in this home and what this is, is a concern, but also the number of people that are living there. My guess is, in this right or wrong, but it feels as if the financial interest of this home is greater than the social cause. I have talked to two different of these women that live there, and they're charged $900 a month, and there are 12 women living in this house. Over the weekend, I called the owner to try to have an open, transparent conversation, and he was, he lacked the ability to have that conversation. He was just completely defensive and had no interest in explaining to us about what, how this whole process has evolved and how he can help us be more accepting of it. Again, I really do feel like we're a roomful of compassionate people and want to see people heal and do well in the world, but this situation is really tough for us to accept. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abby Bugler. Not sure I got that right, but, and...
Hi, I'm Abby Bugler. I'm at 3131 Union Street. I'm just here to support my fellow neighbors. I signed up on the wrong sheet. That's all I'm here for. Thank you.
All right. You may go ahead and speak with, that's...
I mean, basically, everything that they've said is what us as a community and as a neighborhood all feels. So, yeah, about the sober, huh? Yeah, it's B as in boy, I-E-G-L-E-R. Sorry, I don't have anything else to add. Thanks.
Thank you. Looks like we have an autograph, it looks like, from our treasurer, Mr. DiTullio.
Jerry DiTullio. I'm speaking here tonight as a Wheat Ridge resident and taxpayer. So I wanted to clarify a few things tonight. There's an election coming up in the city of Wheat Ridge for council and city treasurer and city clerk. I'm your JFCO treasurer now, so you're still my constituents. I wanted to clarify a few things. So tomorrow night, at 6:00 at the council chambers, there's a Wheat Ridge Chamber candidate forum. If you haven't made it to decision or want to get to see the candidates in action, answering questions, that's tomorrow night here at 6:00. And it'll go through, hopefully, no later than 9:00, based on the schedule. I'll be speaking here on JFCO 1A, which is a different question. So that, I don't want to confuse that forum, which is invited for everybody at the public here, for, we're having a private event fundraiser slash meet the candidates on next Monday at 5:30 at Pietrus Pizzeria, and it's being hosted by Wheat Ridge residents and some folks that we know. I mean, I can list the names here, but the candidates that we're having the fundraiser for and meet and greet is Dave Keeter, Rachel Hulteen, Corey Stites, Phil Nosler Beck, Steve Kirkpatrick, and Chris Miller, who's our current city treasurer, and he's unopposed. It's being hosted by Mike and Ruth Bedderton, Jerry and Julie DiTullio, Mark Duddy, Sunny Garcia, Janice Hoppy, Don Croll, Keeter, Dick Matthews, Chris Miller, Walt Pettit, Kathy Plummer, Wanda Seng, Karen Stanley, Sarah Stites, and Ed Volk. If you're interested in supporting those candidates at Pietrus Pizzeria at 5:30, it's open to come and meet them, and it's a fundraiser for them, too. So I wanted to clarify with our city attorney that because this is a meet and greet, it's on a private location, this may still need to be posted at City Hall, because you may have more than three elected officials there supporting certain candidates. In fact, one of the council people is a candidate. So I just wanted to maybe, Mr. Dahl, to give notice. I don't care either way whether you oppose it or not, but I wanted to do it right and maybe let the clerk know so that they post it, so that there's no black helicopter conspiracy theories out there, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. That concludes all of the people that I have signed up on the citizen's right to speak on any item that is not on the agenda or on the study session agenda. If you have not signed up but would like to speak at this time, you may come forward and speak. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'm going to now go to the public speakers for our special study session, which will happen after our regular meeting. And our first speaker is Greg Dunkelberger, I believe, and Ray Gillian on deck.
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members and the city staff. My name is Greg Dunkelberger, D-U-N-K-E-L-B-E-R-G-E-R, and it's my father's fault for that long name. I am here tonight to urge you to pass a noise ordinance that will help bring quiet back to our neighborhood. I'm sorry, I live at 5120 Newcombe Street, 5320, excuse me. I'm here tonight to urge you to pass a noise ordinance that will help bring quiet back to our neighborhood. I applaud Rocky Mountain Bottle Company for the landscaping improvement... I applaud Rocky Mountain Bottle Company for the landscaping improvements they made in the past year, and I applaud their efforts at reducing emissions at this site. We need to all begin to take care of our planet. However, even though they got approvals from various agencies, they did not seek any input from their neighbors. The machinery they put in place to reduce emissions is so noisy, we cannot enjoy our backyards, our decks, or visit without having to come inside. We cannot have our windows open at night without hearing the noise coming from this plant. In the letter we received from this company, they told us that they have been at this location since 1970 and want to do what they can to ensure that they are a quality neighbor. We want them to be good neighbors, too. Fix the noise problem, please. We're asking the Wheat Ridge City Council to enact a noise ordinance that will reduce the noise level to a point that we can enjoy our backyards again, leave our windows open, and visit without having to shout at one another 24/7. If I remember correctly from a recent work session of the city council, I heard that this company contributes over $1 million in tax revenue to the city each year. I hope I'm correct in that. That is wonderful for our city and a great revenue source, but I hope this fact does not influence you in creating an ordinance that would favor the company over residents. We all need to work together to solve this problem. The technology is there to reduce this noise. While it may be costly to the company, I am sure it would have been cheaper to do it upfront rather than after the fact. It is time for our city government to work with us to create a city and a neighborhood that is safe, is enjoyable, and is a whole lot more quiet than it is right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ray Gilligan, and Chris Bradley on deck.
Hi, my name is Ray Gilligan, and I live at... that's Gilligan, G-I-L-L-I-G-A-N, Light Island. And I live at 5314 Newcombe, that's also in Arvada, excuse me, in Wheat Ridge, Arvada mainland address. I too agree with all the complaints about the noise. I too bought our house 15 or so years ago, and the noise was tolerable until this last winter. It's almost like they shut down and revamped the whole product, the whole factory, and now the noise is really unbearable. And I wish there was something they could do to... that's what I have to wake up to.
It is 6:19 on Labor Day. And listen to this noise that is actually over here. I understand my patio door, listen to it.
And that goes on all night long. I don't know what you can do about it. If you can do anything about it, although I agree, if there's an ordinance that you can pass to put a restriction on them, I don't know. But we never received any notice that they were going to do any construction. They were just doing it. We assumed there was something mellow, but apparently it wasn't. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Chris Bradley. Who did I...
Good evening. I am Chris Bradley, B-R-A-D-L-E-Y, and I live at 5323 Nelson Street. I am also a business owner in the city of Wheat Ridge at 4890 Van Gordon, three miles down the road from the bottling plant. And the business is Smile Line USA. We have lived there for 15 years. We knew it was there, and again, the same problems that we... it was not loud until this last winter. My husband is a high school physics teacher, and in addition to the noise that you heard on the phone and the complaints, he brought home a decibel meter this summer because we wanted to measure and thought, maybe we're just nervous, or not nervous, I'm nervous, maybe we're just worried and think that the noise is greater than what we've heard before. Is it really viable to have the noise? Is it viable within your regulations or what we found is to be a federal ordinance? We had the decibel meter. We are about 250, 300 feet from the fence of the bottling plant, not the actual units, and during the day, it registered around 70 decibels from our home. At night, and this was from our home, at night, it registered higher, at about 75 to 78. So it does go up in noise at night. Could be due to pressure in the air, it could be due to a lot of things. We also measured it at the end of our street, across the street from the bottling plant, and it is much higher than 75, which according to your noise ordinances, it's farther than the 25 feet. Yes, we have trouble sleeping. Yes, we have gone to earplugs at night. We cannot open our windows. One, my son, who's 16, was on the upstairs floor, has now moved downstairs to the basement, and he has said, yes, I sleep so much better. It is something that it affects the entire community. At the Carnation Festival, we were not able to go down. Instead, we went up to Red Rocks Community College at the Water Tower because it's a great view to watch your fireworks. The bottling plant was just as loud up there. We almost feel that we want to carry the decibel meter with us throughout the neighborhood so we understand the points because we are a small sliver of Wheat Ridge that hears the bottling plant, but there's a lot of homes in Arvada in apartment complexes, and is it a possibility for us to talk to the citizens in the county, the city of Arvada with the same problem? Yeah, it's a possibility. Because I'm sure the houses that back to or around Red Rocks Community College hear the same thing. And then the last few things, the excitement of the Arvada Ridge light rail to increase the value of our homes has kind of been lost because right as that was going into effect, along came the bottling plant. So if you were to walk from our neighborhood to the Arvada Ridge, it gets so much louder from walking. So there is no... I mean, why even have a sidewalk there at this point? You're going to kill the people's ears. So that's just my comments on it.
Thank you. I also have Charles Parnell and Dale Squigby on this list also, but they've already spoken. So that concludes the speakers that I have for our special study session signed up. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this that hasn't signed up? Okay, then we will conclude our public comment, and we, as is customary in our council, we will take a response back from councilors, and I see that Mr. Matthews has his hand up, so please, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate everyone coming in. A lot of these issues will be addressed in depth, of course, at the study session, but I appreciate you coming in early. I'm a little baffled tonight by two things. We had one set of people coming in saying we had codes that didn't allow the homeless to go into a church, where they are certainly a little bit better set up to accommodate a larger influx of people, have parking lots in big areas. And then on the other hand, we have people coming in and saying they've been told there's nothing can be done with an influx of people into their neighborhood in a home. So I'm hoping we can address this issue quickly and logically in the near future. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Ms. Weaver.
I will be asking the council for support dealing with the issues around the group housing regulations. So just, I have been talking to several constituents about that since it's in this particular places in District 3.
Yeah, should we get consensus on that support? Is that...
Okay, we're looking for consensus to bring the group home issue into a study session. Okay, we have consensus on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Goff, if you...
Get it on the agenda.
Mayor Protem Hoppe. Thank you. Any other... Ms. Davis.
Can we get consensus also from the city council to discuss the code issues around the sheltering in congregations?
That's already coming back.
It is, okay.
We have our 2018 International Building Codes update on October 7, and we've met with the fire department and have some suggested language that we could adopt.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments back on the public comment? Okay. Thank you all to the public for coming in and talking with us. It's very helpful to hear it firsthand. We will now move to our regular agenda items. With number one, Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce agenda item number one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent Agenda Item 1A, Resolution Number 55-2019, a resolution approving the PIF collecting agent agreement between the city of Wheat Ridge, the Longspreek Metropolitan District, and Evergreen Clear Creek Crossing LLC. Agenda Item 1B, Resolution Number 54-2019, a resolution supporting the city's application for a non-motorized trails grant from the Colorado Parks and Wildlife State Trails Program for the planned multi-use trail associated with the Wheat Ridge Ward Station area.
Thank you. And may I have a motion on Agenda Item 1A and 1B, please?
I motion to approve consent agenda items 1A and 1B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion, excuse me, motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. And will the clerk please clear our podium lights?
What now?
The podium timing light.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe, would you please introduce agenda item number two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 13-2019, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning procedures for protests under Section 5.10 of the Home Rule Charter, case number ZOA-19-03. At issue, the city charter includes a provision allowing for a protest to be filed against a zone change request. If a protest is received, the zoning ordinance must be approved by a three-quarter vote of entire council, the six votes. The purpose of this code amendment is to clarify the protest procedure for rezoning decisions and to enact a delay in the public hearing in the event a protest is received.
And this is continued from September the 9th, 2019. I believe we have an ordinance number... Ms. Shaver, can you remind me of what that ordinance number is?
I have an ordinance number 1673.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing, and it is not quasi-judicial, so I don't need to swear anybody in, but I am going to reopen the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
Yeah, our city attorney, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you. Very short staff report because there was considerable discussion by the council, and you probably don't need me to remind you of the nature of that discussion. What you have in your packet is the version of the ordinance that you saw two weeks ago with the changes in red as being the ones that were adopted as amendments. There was one amendment, I think, by Councilmember Urban that failed in subsection E to change "shall" to "may," but the ones that passed were the ones adding that the protest must be submitted prior to commencement of the public hearing and that the community development department to provide written guidelines on procedures for protest. And the community development department has been working on those and has a draft. In addition, council directed that the... if you see the figure that shows the allowable area for protest, you'll notice there's some additional areas added in pink for the diagonal corners that would be across the street from the property at issue, the subject property. So those were the few changes, quite a bit of discussion, understandable, the few changes that council directed to be made. As council knows, the purpose of this ordinance is to exercise the council's authority to implement and detail how the charter provision on protests can be implemented. You can, as I told you last time, amend the charter or weaken its provisions around protests. In my opinion, nothing that is provided here does so. Instead, it implements the charter, and you have the power to do that. But the discussion continued, and your direction last time was that this be continued to tonight's meeting, and it has been. I am aware that Councilmember Hoppe has prepared an amendment, or asked me to prepare an amendment for her, which is proper. I do that on the request of any council member, and I did so for her, and I believe that you have that, that makes some changes and adds additional detail and additional process. So at this point, I don't have anything more to add unless you have questions for me, but I expect you'll have a fair amount of discussion.
Thank you. Before we go to questions of council, I would like to open it up for public comment on this. I have two people signed up. Our first speaker is Megan Schleicher and Rachel Holtein on deck.
Thank you. Megan Schleicher, S-C-H-L-E-I-C-H-E-R, and I live at 10315 West 33rd Avenue. And I've spoken on this issue with the planning division, and I spoke with you two weeks ago. I often speak from the heart, which I feel must be rather disorganized because I had some outreach from a city council member and other people related to Wheat Ridge government to try and clarify what their intent was versus what I was trying to achieve. And I don't think they're in opposition to one another. I just don't think the wording, as it's been currently proposed, even in some of the wording I've seen subsequent to what was in the plan for today's meeting, addresses my two areas of concern. And I, first of all, want to say thank you for your work because I have worked in civil service government for nearly two decades, and I know it's an often underappreciated effort to try and achieve things like this. I just also know from that same experience that if you don't get it right, you can have a lot of subsequent problems without necessarily the intention of having those problems. So I'm here to help, hopefully, provide some perspective that maybe has not been considered and also just overall better the process, not stymie it in any way. So my two concerns that I have tried to explain, but apparently ineffectively, is first of all that the current wording says that if the protest isn't sufficient, there's no other opportunity for remedying that protest, and it's automatically dismissed, and the vote will go on without the two or three-quarters majority member vote. And I feel that there's a real issue with that because one of the intents of this wording is to increase transparency, and the wording really isn't transparent for the citizens who are trying to work with it when an issue becomes something that they're knowledgeable of, if they're not working in the government and they're not trying to participate in this process on a frequent basis. They're voting the council members in, they're trying to live their day-to-day lives, they're not necessarily getting involved in this process, and the information available to them shouldn't prevent or hinder them from becoming active. We want participation from our citizens, I think. So I would suggest wording be put into place to make it so that there is an ability to remedy a mistake, especially if we can determine, and I don't know how you word this, but if you can determine that the intent or the effort was a legitimate effort and the mistake was not an intentional thing. Then the second item I have is I really, and I've said this before with the planning division or commission, whatever their title is, I would like that the planning development staff be, upon request, able to provide the addresses that are within that 100-feet measurement from the adjacent line of the property. So I don't regularly work with property lines, and I don't have knowledge or technology that gives me where those property lines are. I heard a comment two weeks ago that if 20% of someone's property is in that 100-foot zone, that all of a sudden their signature is going to be considered in that 20% measurement of a protest. And I'm just imagining myself out there with a tape measure and trying to figure out where their lines are and what 20% of their property is to try and accomplish this. So I think upon request, the planning development staff should be able to provide the addresses, especially in lieu of them having to know what those addresses are to determine the validity of a protest in the first place. So if the addresses are already polled, why are we not making that available to the citizens who, again, are not experts, are not, sorry, not people who have a lot of resources and oftentimes don't have a lot of time to get this done, especially in the timeframes provided? I understand the other intents of increasing transparency, increasing an understanding of this process, trying to remove emotion from the vote process, and trying to... trying to just make overall a better, smoother process for everyone, but without these other two points that I mentioned, I don't think we're doing that successfully. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Holtein.
Good evening, Council. My name is Rachel Holtein, and I've spoken on this before, so I'm gonna not duplicate my previous comments, but I do want to just thank Councilwoman Dozeman for the suggestion of giving more time for clarity on these issues. I think the robust discussion that you guys had a few weeks ago really daylighted that it's, you know, it's complicated, there's a real need for clarity, and the previous speaker's comments around, you know, understanding 20% of properties, I mean, that, that's confusing to me, and I have a background in land use. So I really appreciate that you guys have not hurried this and taken the time to really flush out the concerns and make sure that you understand it, the citizens understand it. I appreciated the suggestion last time around posting a packet online so that citizens who are interested in, in filing a protest know how to do it, so that there's clarity around that. And then I think what I'm, what I'm hearing tonight, and I think the discussion that follows, is the additional time that you guys were granted to flush this out just reinforces that having more time when there's an important, serious issue results in better outcomes. So thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes the speakers that I have signed up on this item, but if you did not sign up but are here and would like to speak on this item, you may come to the podium now and speak. Is there anyone who would like to come that hasn't signed up? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will conclude our public comment on this, and I will open the floor to the council for questions of staff. Mr. Keeter.
A quick question for Mr. Doll. If staff made a determination that a petition was inadequate and council acted on that, is, would that determination as to the adequacy of the petition be challengeable in court? Would that be under Rule 106 or some action? So I guess the question is, is that something that's, that's reviewable?
I think it probably is. Rule 106 is the rule that's used to, to review quasi-judicial decisions of local governments. The protest process by its very nature is, relates only to quasi-judicial matters because it's rezoning matters, and those are always quasi-judicial. So if I were a plaintiff challenging the action of the council, you know, you want to list all the reasons you can think of, and if one of those was a, a claim that the council acted improperly and that there was a different voting standard that should have been applied based upon the record, and again, 106 cases are on the record, but there would be a record of, you know, the protest and its dimensions. So yes, I think that, that would be one of the, that'd be a claim I could make, and it's an argument that, that's, that's one of the, the claims that are valid in a review of a rezoning decision, along with, I don't think the conditions were changed to allow zoning, and, and, and there isn't enough evidence for the proposition that it complies with the COT plan. But any of those kinds of things, including, gee, you didn't, you, you failed to provide proper notice, for example, I've put it sort of in that same category, procedural rule that you have that you failed to follow for whatever reason. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would, we had a, would anything in here be interfered or, or changed if you had two separate protests filed? For instance, the guy on the north side files a protest, the guy on the south side of the property files a protest. They may have different reasons, or, or they may just not be friendly neighbors, but I can foresee where there could be issues where two different protests could get filed. And, and does that, is that complication handleable by what we have in front of us?
I think that it is because the protest, the, this is written, and the code section is written in the singular, but you would apply it equally to each protest, evaluate them on their own merits separately. If one passed and one failed, you'd still have a protest, you'd still go up.
And then in the same frame, if two people co-protest and staff determines that the one person actually was two, two feet outside the boundary or something, does that invalidate the whole protest, or do they have to amend it, or what happens that way?
You know, I think Councilmember Keeter asked a related question to that, and, and I've given that a lot of thought, and as usual, you, you explore an, an issue and then more come up, and that's not frankly a question that's ever been a, at issue in any of the protests that council, I've seen in council in the last 20-plus years. But I've come around to the view that, that you have sort of a property right in your protest, and if, if, if there's two people signing protests and only one is eligible, but that one has the 20%, I think you're good. I think that's still a valid protest, and I think it's probably in, when you, and I go back really to the intention of the charter, because the charter says if the owners of 20% protest, then it goes up to, to a three-quarter majority vote, and I think you have to honor that.
And then since I've been around you, I get a little more picky. If two people file a protest and then one wants to take his name off the protest, but the other one still has 20%, is, I assume that's still valid, but if there was just 20% between the two of them, it would become invalid.
I, I think that's right, and that leads me to say that whatever is done, I think if you, if you go with an ordinance that has rescission properties in it, we should look carefully at the various alternative fact patterns that could come up under a rescission and be clear about it, one way or the other, and on balance, I tend to agree. I think if you've still got a signer who has 20%, you've met the charter requirement.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the way that it's currently written, it indicates that, I mean, it presupposes that the letter of protest would be submitted after the first reading, but there's nothing in here that indicates when a letter of protest has to be filed, and so I don't know if we need to make an amendment to this to indicate when a letter, should we indicate when a letter of protest should be filed, or, I guess, one question I have is, when is the earliest someone could file a letter of protest?
That's only two questions. How early can you file, and when's the last date you can file? Let me take up the second question first. I think that was an amendment that council made two weeks ago, and in the ordinance that's in the packet, it's Letter 7A, all protests must be submitted prior to the commencement of the public hearing. So that would be prior to the commencement of the public hearing on second reading, since the, that's, that's your practice. In terms of how early, I think you could probably submit it as soon as there's an application that has been filed that's complete and being processed. Ken, I'm told, might have a thought about that.
Yeah, I just can, can, confirm that, and we actually speak to that in the, in the, the handout that you've received. On the, the first page, on the bottom right, the, in that box, the first, when can a protest be submitted and when is it due? A protest may be submitted anytime after a formal application has been submitted. So in terms of our processes, the first opportunity that a, a neighborhood person or an adjacent property owner would become aware of a potential for rezoning would typically be at the neighborhood meeting. That's actually a fairly broad notice. That's a notice that goes out to people within 600 feet of the subject property, but that doesn't presume that a, a rezoning application actually will be received, so they wouldn't be able to, you know, file a protest the day after the neighborhood meeting. So it has to have, would have to be in response to an act, actual application being filed. And in terms of when adjacent property owners within 300 feet would receive notice of that and therefore would, would know that they could start working on that, I mean, the, the actual application might have been in the works with staff under staff review for several months, but the first official notice that they would receive on a rezoning ordinance would be the Planning Commission public hearing, and that's 15 days prior to the Planning Commission public hearing where they would get both a, a written notice as well as the posting of the property. The city council public hearing would be, is, is also noticed 15 days prior to the meeting. So typically, that formal noticing period would be 30 to 60 days prior to the actual public hearing before city council, in terms of how much time you'd have to be able to gather necessary signatures.
And I guess that brings me to my concern as it relates to the 7B. It says, once a protest is submitted, the hearing shall be automatically contained to the next regular business meeting. So in this instance, as soon as an application is filed, someone files a letter of protest, then all of a sudden we've got to schedule that for the next regular business meeting?
That's in on. Oh. You're looking at Councilmember Hoppe's proposed amendment, right? Yes, I mean, that, that's, that's the, that's what it says, that's, that's the, the effect of that, of that amendment.
Ms. Weaver?
Well, I mean, not, not really. I mean, the, the overarching concern I have is that we're not indicating when, I'm not saying we have to indicate when the letter of protest may be filed, it's more this, if a, what, what I would suggest is that if the letter of protest is filed after the first reading but before the close of the public hearing, then we would move to continue it to the next regular scheduled business meeting. But if it's filed before the first reading of the bill, then we wouldn't need to continue anything because it's, we already have enough time in the process. So that's what I would like to see done.
Okay, and that, that sort of jumps a little bit ahead on the amendment that we may or may not entertain tonight.
Okay.
Let me go to Ms. Weaver, and then Mr. Pond, I believe, and then Mr. Keeter.
I just have a quick question on the, if there are two protests, as Mr. Matthews described, what if I am in the area and I sign both of them as 20%? Does that continue to make both protests valid? In other words, can I sign two?
Well, I'd have to kind of map that out and see.
Well, and, and maybe I'm, I'm just trying to understand, right? Because it says, it says, you have to have 20% of the area, correct? And I'm just going with that example. Let's say there's two protests by people for different reasons.
And they overlap your property.
And, and, and I am, right, there's a list of 10 owners, and they come to me and ask me to sign it, and the other person comes to me and I sign it, and I've signed two protests. Does that make either of them null and void? Is that okay?
I, I don't think so. I mean, each protest is reviewed on its merits. So protest number one that you sign, if that's got 20%, and you're part of the 20%, great. And if protest number two, signed by others plus you, and that's got 20%, then they're both, they're both valid.
But I don't have to choose one?
No, I don't, I don't think you do. If, if your property ends up being such that it's necessary for one or both of those protests to have 20%, and you choose to, to rescind, then whichever protest, your rescission was fatal with respect to is, you know, out. The overlapping might be that in one of them, they've got tons of property and you're just extra. Doesn't matter if you're in there or not. In the other one, you're critical, but I don't see anything that prohibits you from signing more than one.
Let me go to Mr. John Stone right now, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would, Mr. Doll is correct in terms of how we would review that. I just wanted to maybe clarify what has been, what we've witnessed in the past on, on legal protests, which is, we don't get kind of this petition that gets circulated. What we get is individual property owners sign, giving us a, a piece of paper that says, I protest the approval of this ordinance, and we think that's the cleaner way to go, that we just have individual property owners that fill out a form, sign it, it's, it's clear that they're the owner of the property, and we can prove up those on an individual basis, as opposed to what feels like maybe a little bit of messy of approach. Either can work, right? But, and, and one that we really haven't seen, we haven't really seen this kind of petition form of protest where, where someone takes a, you know, something around the neighborhood to property owners that they might think are eligible for firming up a protest, a legal protest. So in our language, in the description of what is own change protest, we're suggesting that that could be clarified. Doesn't have to be, but basically saying that if you want to protest the zoning, fill out this form, here it is, this is a standard form. That would be a change, too. We haven't done that in the past in terms of a standard form, and each property owner would stand on its own. And that's helpful, too, because some properties may in fact be applicable to more than one eligible property line, right? So some of those wing properties, the, the arc properties, could apply both to, say, a side property line and a rear property line. So by filling out one form, they've made themselves potentially in consideration for either of those protests to be determined to meet that 20% requirement.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Pond. You're okay, Mr. Keeter?
So to one of the speaker's questions, would it be especially burdensome if, Community Development, if somebody came in and said, help me figure out what are the, what are the properties that are within 100, 100 feet, to, to help guide them on that? I, I don't, it doesn't seem like it would be reasonable for you to game out every, every scenario as to what 20% would consist of among that, but just to say, here's the, here's how we draw the line, these are the properties that are within that, and then, and then it's essentially their responsibility to, to, to find that 20%.
Right. Couple things, let me maybe just say what our current practice has been. The controller of the data that is pertinent to determining whether these are legal protests is the Jefferson County Assessor's data, right? Both the parcel maps that they keep and the ownership information that they keep. So our typical practice has been to link up that requesting person with that database and even walk them through the, the assessor's database if they want some assistance in that regard. We haven't typically taken it to the next step of saying, and here's your list of, for this property, you know, the eligible properties that, that could be considered. There's certainly to the next step of, you know, and this is what it would take to get to 20% here, 20% here, et cetera, et cetera, as I think you're suggesting we would maybe be taking it too far. The other practice that we've done right now is, you know, again, we, of late, we've gotten some protests on properties that have kind of come up at the hearing, right? In the past, in my experience, typically, we get them well in advance of the hearing, right? They, they get notice of the hearing of the Planning Commission, they say, I don't like that, and they, you know, talk to two or three neighbors, and they come in and they submit a protest, then they come to us and say, is that a legal protest? And we evaluate the, the mapping and they, and do that analysis and tell them yea or nay. So we're already doing kind of those steps in the process. As you look at bigger rezoning, certainly coming up with that calculation could become more challenging. So we've been in more of a reactive mode than, than really giving them a list of, of, of property owners. I'd be a little concerned that in the taking on that responsibility, not so much the burden of time, but the, the burden of the, of the actual analysis in the first instance is placed on staffs, right? So we have to get it right in the first instance when we tell them who you should be reaching out to. If there's a property owner that has changed ownership, for instance, the, the Jefferson County Assessor's data is not up to speed, someone who lives in the neighborhood may be better suited to know that, whereas we would be giving them a bad potential ownership pattern. So I'm not saying we can't do it, just some things to think about. And, and the other one would be this, which is the other situation in which a protest could be, could come into play, is where the city initiated rezoning. So in that instance, 38th Avenue, Wadsworth, you know, hundreds of properties that went into a rezoning process, city council actually at that time gave those property owners at your own, you volunteered this, but an, an option to opt out of that rezoning process on a parcel-by-parcel basis. But lacking that option to opt out, which you just created as a process, and it was a good one, then we would have to potentially look at, you know, a corridor that's a couple miles long and provide ownership and parcel information. So that could become burdensome. It's not a frequent occurrence, but, you know, in the mid-'90s, the city rezoned significant portions of our residential areas as well. So if we set that as policy, firm, that would be just something to be aware of.
Mr. Johnson, I had a question for you. At some point in the process, if you start getting property owners who have, who have registered a protest, you will need to make an area calculation of what is 100% of the protest area, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we will. Yeah, we, we'll do those the minute someone brings them in during the process, absolutely.
So you would, you would then go and, and understand, based on the diagrams that we have of 100 feet here and the radius there, what the, what the total area is to make, to make 100% of the protest area, so that when, when you get these, you would be able to ascertain whether you had 20%, and that would kick us into the supermajority?
Right. We don't, I mean, we don't do that until we get at least one protest, but once we do, we essentially determine what the denominator is on that applicable property line, and then see what comes in in terms of the numerator and whether it gets to that 20%.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
So I, I have just a couple of questions on kind of this discussion. And I know one, the gal that spoke, one of the questions she made was, just make, you know, if upon request, that list would be available. And I guess my question would be, I could understand not to have all the property owner and that type of thing, but we should be able to give, I'm guessing, the addresses. So even if we gave, you know, 7975 West 39th, you know, 8080 Melrose Drive, you know, those types of things, that we could at least give the addresses, and then they, like you said, it might have changed than what we have on record, and, you know, hopefully they're all neighbors and know each other, so they could go knock on the door and say, hey, what do you think of this, type of thing. But even, I guess, to me, it might even be at least a little helpful to give the addresses of that area, and not necessarily all the property owners and, and that type of thing.
If, I'll, I'll answer that as if it's a question, even if it wasn't.
Yeah.
Certainly, that would be less burdensome and, and more fact-based in terms of, those are, addresses change with, with great infrequency.
Yeah, that would, that would be great. Thanks.
Additional questions? Ms. Hoppy?
Mr. Doll, would there be an opportunity for us to put in language for the first reading that says, when we're, we're setting the date for the public hearing, that says that if we receive a protest up to the commencement of this, of the sec, of the public hearing, that there will be a continuation to the next regular business council meeting, so that when the, we're originally publishing the date of when the hearing's going to be, people understand that if there is a protest, if a protest does come in by the commencement of that hearing, that it will be continued. Therefore, it'll let people know when they come. If we say, okay, we have a protest, they say, well, we already know the process, that means it's going to be continued.
Yeah, I think you could, you could do that, and I assume the goal there would be to let people know ahead of the second reading public hearing that, you know, it's going to be, if you otherwise decide, there's this automatic continuance of some sort or another, different versions of it, so that people aren't showing up and being surprised that, that they're going to have to come back. Yeah, if, if it comes in by a certain date, you could certainly provide that, that now it's made known that while it's scheduled for second reading on a given date, that because of the propensity of a protest, that will be continued to a later date. Yeah, you could do that.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Has everyone exhausted this particular part of the discussion? Because I'm going to change direction just a little, so I'll let you keep your thread going if anyone has anything else to say.
Our clerk has something she wants to say.
I had a question about, from what Councilmember Hoppy said about a requirement for a second publishing of that continuation. That's required, right?
Well, no, it's going to depend upon what the ultimate version of this ordinance is, it really is.
So, but if it's continued, it has to be republished?
Is that a statement or a question?
A question.
Well, I don't know what our usual practice is. If something's continued, it's been noticed already for second reading, right? Is that your question?
Okay.
And then it's going to be automatically continued.
Okay.
Then we don't republish. I think you'd probably make a little record on the agenda that night. Hi, we're now at second reading, but because of our process, it's in the charter, it's in the code, this particular hearing is now going to be automatically continued to such and such a date. I don't think you'd have to republish because you've published once. We, we probably would make it, I mean, I would advise that you make it clear on the website, you know, that that's happening.
I don't believe that we republish tonight's continuation of this public hearing, and I don't think we do that. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. I want to throw a little curveball at you here, because it just dawned on me, and I was going to write you a note, and I didn't, but one of the things that some of the people that were unhappy with the way things were published and put out was the 100-foot limit. And that is by charter, I don't know if that's an absolute max, minimum, or just an absolute, but people, a lot of people believe that, you know, that may just be one lot away, and their property values and their, their life quality may be greatly affected by a zone change, and they think it should be some longer distance than 100 feet. And I'm not sure how to interpret the charter, you know, if that 100 feet's an absolute that we can't change without going to a referendum.
I think, I think that you can't change it without changing the charter, and I think that because the, the 100 feet grants rights, and when you think about it, also grants protections to the property that wants to rezone, is protected from protests that are further than 100 feet, because the charter says, okay, I've got exposure, it's only out to 100 feet. So we often think of the 100-foot limit as, as sort of granting rights, as it does, absolutely, to the people within 100 feet. And gee, why couldn't we expand rights? That's not contrary to the charter, if you're giving, giving more. But the charter grants protections, as I've described, to that property owner, knowing, okay, that's my exposure is out to 100 feet. And I think were you to change that, that number, you'd be amending the charter in a way that, that you'd be taking away that protection that is equally available, you know, it's, it's equally a part of, the 100-foot limit cuts both ways, is all I'm trying to say. And, and the charter made a choice, the drafters of the charter made a choice that that was the number that should cut both ways. So if there's going to be a different number to, to energize a charter-based protection and right, it's going to have to be in the charter.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there additional discussion or questions, not discussion because we're actually in the questioning phase, of staff or attorney on this matter? Before I close the public hearing, and we're going to take a motion, and at that time, I hope that we're answered, have asked all the questions of our staff and our attorney. That's the, that's the purpose of what, what we're doing now, so. Do we have any more questions that we want to ask our attorney or his staff, or? And I'm going to close the public hearing. And Ms. Hoppy, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2019, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheatridge Code of Laws concerning the right of protest procedure for rezoning decisions with amendments on second reading with the following amendments. B, in the event a letter of protest is submitted prior to the first reading and has been determined to be sufficient by community development staff and by the charter requirements 5.10, the hearing shall continue on the original scheduled date. If a protest is submitted after first reading before the commencement of the public hearing, of the commencement of the public hearing, the hearing shall be continued to the next regular business meeting of council. C, prior to 5:00 PM on the next regular business day following the day upon which the protest was submitted, the community development staff shall review the protest to confirm the signers thereof as owners of their required property ownership and area requirements of Charter 5.10, and shall promptly inform the signers of that determination. D, if the community development staff determines the protest does not meet the required property ownership and area requirements of Charter 5.10, the signers of the protest may amend the protest at any time prior to the commencement of the continued public hearing. E, at the continued public hearing, only the original protest or the original protest amended as permitted by this section, the amended protest, will be considered for purposes of determining the proper council voting requirements on the matter. F, if the amendment protest is timely, timely submitted before the commencement of the continued public hearing, the community development staff shall review the amended protest to confirm the signers thereof as owners of the required property and its compliance with the area requirements of the Charter 5.10. G, if necessary, the mayor shall declare a recess to enable the community development staff to perform their review. H, if the community development staff determines the protest does not meet the owner or area requirements of Charter 5.10, the hearing may be conducted and closed, and the council may act without the three-quarter majority voting requirement. I, if the community development staff determines the protest meets the owner and area requirements of Charter 5.10, the hearing shall be conducted and closed, and the council may act subject to the three-quarter majority requirement of Charter 5.10. J, the protest area, oh, J is, does not change, just the lettering changes on J. And we will skip to K. A protest, once filed and determined by the community development staff to comply with the owner and area requirements of Charter 5.10, may be rescinded only in a written instrument signed by the same person or persons as the protest and presented to the city clerk prior to closing of the public hearing. L, the community development department shall provide written guidelines to the public on procedures for protest. I would also like to add to this motion that we add language to the first reading noticing, if a protest is filed before the commencement of the public hearing and is found sufficient, the hearing will be continued to the next business meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion on the motion?
And who was the second?
Second is Mr. Keter. Is there a discussion on the motion? Mr. Keter?
So just briefly, again, with one of the, the people of public comment, that this provides that if a protest is submitted and it's found to be inadequate, as long as there's still time before the deadline, that can still be amended. And so people who submit a protest and it's found not to be sufficient have the opportunity under this revised language to go back and cure that.
Ms. Hoppy, do you want to respond to that as the maker of the motion?
Yes, it's, that's true.
Okay, thank you. Are there any fur, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero. Is that correct?
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Number Three. Mr. Keter, would you introduce Agenda Item Number Three?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item Number Three, Council Bill Number 15-2019, an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article Eight of the Wheatridge Code of Laws to add floodplains in the Sloans Lake watershed to the city's floodplain maps as a local flood hazard area. At issue, the Sloans Lake flood hazard area delineation has been adopted by both the Colorado Water Conservation Board and the Mile High Flood District. The flood hazard area delineation is now ready to be adopted as a local flood hazard area. This requires an amendment to Chapter 26, Article Eight of the Wheatridge Code of Laws pertaining to floodplain control.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It will be a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. Can the clerk give me an ordinance number, please?
This will be ordinance number 1674.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
Mr. Wesberg is here, but only if there's any questions from City Council.
Okay. We will, we will hold off on Mr., any presentation from Mr. Wesberg, and, and understand that he's available for questions. So I will open this up to questions from council of Mr. Wesberg or, or any other, any other staff that are here. Are there any questions on this before I close the public hearing? Mr. Keter?
Do we take public comment?
We do.
Oh.
We do. Mr. Doll is, Mr. Doll is going to grab the sign-up sheet.
Doll is seeking, uh?
There is none.
Got it.
Okay, but I will open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here who has not signed up on this to speak from the public? You may do so now. Okay, you're, let's, let's, let's not be, let's not be a joker in the crowd. So I don't see any, any, any public comment. Before I close the public hearing, are there any more questions of council? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mr. Keter, a motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 15-2019, an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article Eight of the Wheatridge Code of Laws to add floodplains in the Sloans Lake watershed to the city's floodplain maps as a local flood hazard area on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll move to our next Agenda Item Number Four. Ms. Davis, will you introduce Item Number Four, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 53-2019, a resolution in support of Jefferson County Ballot Issue 1A. At issue, Jefferson County is asking voters for a seven-year exemption from all Tabor revenue and spending limitations to avoid potential budget cuts in 2020 and subsequent years. Approving this ballot issue would not create or increase any taxes, however, it would allow for the county to retain and spend or reserve all revenues received between 2020 and 2026.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we, we don't have a staff presentation, do we?
We don't.
I think we've had, we've had this at a study session, so.
I believe our county treasurer probably wants to speak on it, so he'll give you more information.
I have a sign-up sheet here, and I'm going to find that, so that I know where we are, because I'm going to open this up to public comment, and I have one, one person sign up to read. I can't really read the, read it, but I'm going to take a stab at it. It looks like Jerry DeTulio.
That's how I sign the checks now.
You know, I haven't seen mine lately.
I was going to say, you're not sending any to us, so.
Jerry DeTulio, Jefferson County Treasurer. I just wanted to speak briefly on Jeffco 1A. I've been hitting a lot of different council meetings, a lot of neighborhood meetings in Lakewood, Arvada, and Wheatridge, talking about Jeffco 1A. On July 23rd, the Board of County Commissioners had a seven-hour public hearing at the county. We had about 300 people show up, and we all spoke on different aspects of this. And one of the things that I really pushed for, for my conservative friends with love, like Ms. Dozeman and Mr. Marriott and a few others, and was that, we have the seven-year sunset on this, so that in seven years, this isn't in perpetuity, that in seven years, we have to go back to the voters and ask for permission to keep the excess revenues. When we talk about excess revenues, it's really, we collect the funds based on the current mill levy, but the, in the past, the county commissioners had been lowering the mill levy before they actually collect that funds, then they're short, and then they're, they're borrowing from the reserve to pay their bills. And so we've left on the table over the last five years, not we, but previous county elected officials, about $110 million that should have been collected legally based on the mill levies that are allowed. And so this is a seven-year timeout on the revenue cap, and it will also, does not raise taxes to the point where you, the county can raise taxes without a vote of the people. If you want, if the county wants to raise the mill levy or create a new tax, we still have to go to the voters and ask the voters. Would it benefits in the ballot question will be public safety, which is the sheriff, the DA, and the coroner. The sheriff cut about $3.1 million in his budget this year, and those three are obviously for public safety. The statutory requirements is going to be the treasurer, the clerk, and recorder, and the assessor, to do our jobs and to do them right. Like, for example, this year, I cut $107,000 out of my budget. The clerk was about $600,000. So we want to make sure our elections are fair and honest and legal, and not getting corrupt, and we want to make sure the assessor's doing his job to make sure that's accurate assessments on property, and then also with the county treasurer, make sure that we're collecting properly the, the funds and not overcharging, undercharging. And also, it's going to be for road and bridge across the county, that are county roads and bridges, and also county facilities maintenance. So those are the four that are listed on the ballot question. What also covered indirectly is that we have human services and public health. They get grants from the state, but those grants and the interest I earn as your treasurer and the fees we collect are all lumped into this revenue cap. And so if we get a grant from the state, like human services or public health, then we can't collect the revenues that we've collected through the property taxes. So we're a donor county to other counties because we're giving our money up to those counties are, have already debrouched. And about 80% of the counties in Colorado have debrouched, out of 64 counties. When I say debrouched, it's, it's a Tabor debreusing for seven years. It follows Lakewood's debreusing last year, Tabor debreusing last It follows Lakewood's debreusing last year, Tabor debreusing last year of, of seven years. So, seven years from now, we're gonna have to come back and ask you again on the property tax. What's debrousing perpetuity in this change is interest, state grants, fees that are collected through the normal course of business. But it's the property taxes is the large one. For Jefferson County, it's the 220,000 property owners in Jeffco that will have to give permission in seven years from now if it passes. So, with that, I'll stop, and just wanted to see if you had any questions. I know the sheriff gave his spiel last, two weeks ago, so... It's bipartisan support. We have Republicans, Democrats. Everybody's on, on board with this so far, at, at the county as far as elected to go. The DA is Republican, and so, everybody's working together.
Thank you. Mr. DeTulio is the only speaker that I have signed up to speak. If you didn't sign up to speak but would like to speak on this matter, you may come forward now and, and speak. Okay, don't see anybody there, so we will close our public comment portion of the meeting on this.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Matthews had a question.
Okay, we're gonna, we're, we're now going to go from questions of council, of, of staff. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I need to apologize. I had some paperwork prepared for this item, and I buried it in my stuff for tomorrow night, so I, I don't have it with me, so verify my numbers a little bit.
Okay.
I downloaded your 2020 proposed budgets, and I believe your revenues were at like $565 million, thereabouts, projected.
For the county general fund?
Well, yeah, it was, it was that little four-page or whatever kind of a synopsis, and your expenditures were at $535 million. And it's my, and so, it's my understanding, though, that your actual shortfall is somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 million.
16 million, so we had to cut the budget.
So, that's 3%.
Yeah, we gotta cut our budgets to balance.
So...
Because we weren't taking any more money out of the reserve.
So, overall, that's 3%. Why is it that everything's coming out of like public safety and roads, the stuff that directly affects the everyday lives of most of the, most of your citizens?
Well, if you ask the county manager and the Board of County Commissioners, they'll tell you because the sheriff is 67% of the county general fund budget, and they're taking it out of the jail, and that's where a lot of the expense are. So, what they're doing, my understanding, from the sheriff, that they're not replacing a lot of those FTEs that have left, and they're also giving up some beds. So, we, which has a few beds in there, Arvada, Lakewood, and those beds are being discarded and not funded. So, it's, it's a big picture of a lot of money. So, the sheriff was the most, 3.1 million budget cuts. The DA was a million and a half.
Don't we pay for some of that service?
Well, you pay, the property taxes do.
But does Wheat Ridge PD as part of their budget? I mean, are you just taking that, that service? If we have to deliver someone to county jail, as Wheat Ridge PD does, are we charged separately for that service?
To house an inmate in the jail? No.
Okay. So, but my numbers were right. It's about 15 million in the actually shortfall.
Right.
And if you, this, and if this amendment goes through, what does that add to your revenues?
Well, the first year, the ballot question states that the mill levy will go back up to the allowed amount, up to 16 million. So, we're only gonna break, return back to 16 million that we've lost or didn't collect this year. So, that's the first year in 2020. If you look at the ballot question, it talks about, okay, we could go up to this legal amount of mill levy, but we're only gonna go up 16 million. Generally speaking, once the mill levy is at its max, which is the legally amount, it could be up to $30 million a year extra after 2020. But the Board of County Commissioners are phasing it in so that it's not a big jump from what they've been cutting it to the legal amount.
Okay, but you, and you, and they're gonna, I'm trying to get this in, because I couldn't find it online, but you said that they've not been charging as much, or charging as much mill levy as they were allowed to?
Right, so...
But why wouldn't they have done that in the past?
If you look at your tax bill, you'll see where the county commissioners and on the property tax, but we would say, okay, your, your mill levy has been reduced by 1.2 mills. And that was a decision by previous boards to lower the mill levy to not exceed the revenue cap. Well, when they lowered the mill levy, they didn't estimate well on the revenue cap, and they actually collected less than they needed, so they started borrowing from the reserve. So, right now, the reserve, which I manage, at 28 million, is for two months of, two months of expenses, and that's it. So, what they should have been doing all along, now I'm pontificating, is they should have been collecting the full mill levy every year and then going to the voters every year and saying, okay, we've overcollected. Do you want us to keep it, or do you want us to refund it? They should have been doing that in perpetuity the last five years. They did it backwards. They cut it, and now we're paying the price for it. What they should have done is collect the full mill levy, and if they overcollected, they overcollected on the revenues, and then asked the voters. They did it ahead versus a forward. Does that make sense? I, I don't know why they were doing it. I mean, this is before my time, you know, this is, I've been there nine months, but from what I look at my documentation, they were cutting the mill levy every year and reducing it artificially to look like they could not exceed that revenue cap in Tabor.
Okay, but, so for 2020, are they going back and charging the reduced mill levy, or have they already decided to go up to the full legal?
No, that I was saying, they're gonna go up to the additional 16 million on that mill levy for 2020. Then, after that, they could go up to the additional 30 million a year. That's the full mill levy.
But isn't that allowed in Tabor? You're saying it's the maximum amount they could have?
I'm saying that the amount they could have is what's been approved by the voters a long time ago. The current mill levy is what they can't exceed.
Yeah, Tabor allows, allows you to, if you did a temporary mill levy...
Oh, yeah.
Tabor allows you to come back to what it originally was.
So, why do they need, if Tabor allows that, why don't they just go up to that and get their 16 million? Why do you need the amendment?
Because they have to give the money back. They have to give the, bec- because they're, they're still under the Tabor restrictions. The county is still under Tabor restrictions because they haven't debrouched. So, they can't, if you go back, if they go back to the, the original mill levy, they're, they're overcollecting, and then they would have to give it back.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. If they would have collected their full mill levy in the last five, five years, they would have exceeded the revenue cap.
But why don't they just do that for next year, just ask, just like we had to do with our 2E funds, just ask the voters to be able to keep that for one year instead of seven?
That's a, that's a question that's above my pay grade. I don't know why the Board of County Commissioners and the county manager have done it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is why they're doing this for seven years and not just for next year, like we did with 2E, our 2E.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
Uh, thank you, County Treasurer DeTulio, for coming in to give us more background on this. Can you, can you tell us what the average impact is for the homeowner that's gonna be this year?
Well, the ballot question, do you have the ballot question in front of you possibly? I think it's talking about $9 a month on an average of a $400,000 house. So, if they raise the mill levy to the full amount, it's gonna be about $100 more a year. I believe that was, it says in the...
It's, the average homeowner is about, it's $4.50, $4.50 per month, so $54, $54 per year for a business, business worth property, business property value of $100,000. For every $100,000, it's $9 a month.
Yeah, that's what it was, $9 there. And those are based on the Gallagher percentages of...
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion? Let's see, we, well, actually, we're on questions.
Is there a motion in order?
Thank you.
So, we're out of questions. Thank you, Mr. DeTulio, for coming in. Yes, Ms. Davis, please provide us a motion on this.
Thank you. I move to approve resolution number 53-2019, a resolution of city council in support of Jefferson County ballot issue 1A.
Second.
I think Mr. Urban got that one. Sorry, Ms. Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I just want you to know, I'm really conflicted on this. I, I, I keep thinking about when we had, you know, the shutdown of, on a federal level, and the first thing they did was shut down the parks so they could, you know, really stick it to the people. And I don't know if there's any of that going on, I'm not saying there is, but if they mismanaged before, and now they're trying to make it up, I'm just, I'm really conflicted. So, if anyone else wants to ask some discussion for a while, I'd love to have time to contemplate.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Ms. Dozeman?
So, I understand your hesitancy, but I think that when we see an issue of this nature that is bipartisan and is publicly being supported by people of both parties, and we would see the cuts affect many of the municipalities, specifically our, our police departments, and whether we'd be able to house any detainees in Jefferson County, I think that that really is kind of an issue, and interim chief Dave Pickett spoke to that at the study session, and, and they basically said there would be no more beds for Wheat Ridge to house any detainees in. So, I, I think that when it comes down to a bipartisan issue, and, and we have bipartisan support, that, that we should definitely pass a resolution in that, in that manner.
Mr. Matthews?
That is the real crux of my conflict, too, is that we put ourselves in a pickle if we don't get this going through, and we've really hurt our police department.
Additional discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. DeTulio, I hope you'll take that, that news back to your, to your folks at...
I will.
Tomorrow. Thank you. That concludes our, the agenda items that we have. We're not done, we're not done yet by a long shot, but we'll keep moving on it. We will go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some exciting news to report. Mark Wesberg is still here, right? He is. So, this is, a lot of this is directed towards him, but after two years of planning environmental linkages study and three years of environmental assessment process, we finally have our completed Fonzie, which stands for Finding of No Significant Impact, and all federal approvals for the Wadsworth project. So, anytime there's federal dollars involved in anything, there's a lot of strings attached and a lo, a long process, so thank you, Mark Wesberg, for your patience with that and our whole team. But, so, that, that was a huge milestone in that project to get a signed Fonzie from the federal government, so...
I, I hope that doesn't mean that, that the work that we do will not have a positive impact on our residents.
Of course not.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Doll?
Yes, I've got a litigation report. On one case, I'm asking for an executive session, so I think your agenda even provides for you to go to the study, recess to study session, reconvene the regular meeting for the purpose of taking an executive session motion, and we'll do that in the, in the regular course. But I also wanted to, a report to you on the Clark and Sorrentino case, and that is a district court case, if you're interested in case numbers, 2019 CV 30708, John Clark and Raleigh Sorrentino versus the city of Wheat Ridge. This case was brought by Mr. Clark and Mr. Sorrentino as plaintiffs against the city and Upham Partners LLC, which is a LLC, of course, and Creekside Homes LLC, and they are the developers of the projects at 4400 Tabor Street and 4,000 to 4,066 Upham Street, respectively. Council, you'll remember that these two projects each involved a rezoning request, which the council approved. Mr. Clark and Mr. Sorrentino, after those approvals, filed a complaint in Jefferson County District Court challenging both of those actions. After a series of motions in the case, the plaintiffs agreed to dismiss all their claims in the case with prejudice. A stipulated motion to dismiss the case was granted by the court on or around September the 3rd, and that ends that case, so that case is now over. But I want to report that the dismissal of the case was triggered, at least in part, by settlement discussions between Mr. Clark and Mr. Sorrentino, on the one hand, and the developers, those LLCs of the two projects, on the other. However, the city was in the case. The city was a defendant in the case, and a condition of the city's consent to dismissal of the case was that the material elements of the settlement between Mr. Clark and Mr. Sorrentino, on the one hand, and the developers, on the other, be disclosed to you, and that those material elements could be made public by you. And that's what I'm doing. The settlement was done through the attorneys for the parties. The city was represented by attorneys from our insurance carrier, and I can report to you the material elements of the settlement agreement between Clark and Sorrentino and the developer entities, and those material elements are these. Mr. Clark and Mr. Sorrentino agreed to dismiss the suit and waive any claims they could have brought. Mr. Clark and Mr. Sorrentino can talk about why they settled the case and that the amount was less than the amount of attorney fees they incurred. The developers pay Mr. Clark $8,000, and they pay Mr. Sorrentino $5,000. Mr. Clark agrees to release his claims against the Tabor and Riverside developers, and Riverside is the property, I think, just adjacent to the Tabor property that was subject to the rezoning, and he agreed not to challenge the development process for those two projects. Mr. Sorrentino agreed to release claims against the Upham developer and agreed not to challenge the development process for the Upham project if that's eventually approved by the voters, and as you know, that's on the ballot. I want to emphasize that the city did not pay any money to settle this case. Instead, the city's attorney fees and some minor costs were paid by our insurance. So, the case is now fully dismissed with prejudice, and that means, in district court parlance, that the plaintiffs may not bring these same, the same case or the claims raised in that case again. So, that's, that's the report I can give you.
Thank you. We will move to elected officials' matters. Why don't we just take a show of hands if someone has something to do, something to say at this time? Mr. Urban?
I'll be excusing myself from tonight's study session.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
Hi, yes, I just want to say thanks a lot to The Family Tree for coming out for our proclamation for the October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and that The Family Tree, at this point in time, are asking, they have some needs for some self, shelf-stable foods and toiletries, and then they also have a good fun, a big fundraiser on Wednesday, October 16th, at 6:30 at the Redline Contemporary Art Center, formerly known as Girls Night Out, but it's now on the town, and it's, you can get tickets for that at www.thefamilytree.org.
I am going to recess into a special study session at this time. Oh, yes?
Um, I thought someone else would announce it, but we should probably announce the forum tomorrow. I know they kind of did it on the public, on, on the dais.
Stellar idea.
Uh, but the candidate forum is tomorrow, and it's here and being televised, and it starts at 6:00 PM. Is that what time it starts?
It...
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
So, just wanted to let, remind folks of that.
Thank you. And, and actually, since we're making announcements tomorrow evening, if, if that event doesn't tweak your interest, I'm going to be sitting on a, on a panel with other mayors, the Denver mayor and the Golden mayor, and, and a stand-in for our Lakewood mayor to talk about sustainability issues that, that we've been doing in our, in our community, and how we will sort of decrease our carbon footprint and make us more sustainable into the future. It's tomorrow night, commences at about 5:30 at the Denver Press Club, so if you are not otherwise engaged, we'd, I'm sure, love to have you at that event. Okay, now, I'm going to recess into a special study session. At the end of that study session, we will reconvene our regular meeting to go into executive session, and then we will reconvene our meeting in order to, to close that meeting, to adjourn. Prior to that, in, in conjunction with that recess, we're going to, to reconvene in 10 minutes from now to give everyone a chance to...
Point of order, sir?
Yes, sir.
Do we get paid three times for three meetings?
No, no, this is one, you know, one, one night.
Call to order the special study session for the city council for the city of Wheatridge, Colorado for September 23rd, 2019. We've already had citizen comment on this item in accordance with our council rules. So we'll go to item number one. This is the noise ordinance. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation, a staff presentation on the noise ordinance?
We do. That would be me, Mr. Mayor. And you have a staff report, of course, in your packet. And also along with that staff report are some examples of other noise ordinances from the state, Jefferson County, and our surrounding communities. I think Golden, Lakewood, and Arvada are all in there. This item was brought forward by council members Matthews and Dozeman to bring it to a study session for discussion, particularly to address, as you heard this evening from many speakers, some noise issues that we're having at the Rocky Mountain Bottling Bottle Company. However, this isn't specific to them necessarily. This is to propose potential amendments to our noise ordinance to deal with noise across the city. And we've looked at this numerous times since I've been here at the city and haven't made too many adjustments, honestly. I think we made a few. A little bit of background, I did on this research, there's really no silver bullet across the country on dealing with noise. And it really, it depends on the community. And there's numerous types of noise ordinances across the country. And even the five that I put in your packet are all a little bit different. But they really do kind of break down into two different kinds of ordinances. One is a qualitative noise ordinance where it's really based on more vague standards that prescribe noise characterized by adjectives such as unusual, unnecessary, unreasonable. And the city of Wheatridge's code is a qualitative ordinance. And some of the language that is in our code is unreasonable, would annoy, injure, or endanger the comfort, repose, or peace of a person of ordinary sensitivities. Try to take that to court, right? So very vague. The other really large category of ordinances is quantitative, where you really have, the ordinances prescribe noise-producing conduct by decibel levels. And some of the, again, some of the examples, the county, the state, and I believe Arvada, all have more of a quantitative ordinance, where they actually have a chart in their ordinance that limits noise to certain decibel levels depending on what part of the community that noise is coming from. I do have a gentleman in the audience tonight. He's not here for a presentation necessarily, but Andrew Truitt is, works, is an engineer working for an acoustical engineering firm. And he's offered actually to listen to tonight's testimony. He was here and heard from the citizens and heard some of their complaints. And then depending on what city council decides tonight, what direction they give us, you give us all to help us potentially draft an ordinance that they've, he's, Andrews worked on this with many different communities. And you want to make sure that your ordinance is drafted correctly so that you can enforce it, you can measure noise in different ways. And so he's here to help provide some advice if needed. So, and I can give an update on the Rocky Mountain Bottle Company also specifically, if you'd like to talk about that. But again, this is really a change to an ordinance to deal with noise across the city, not just on that property. But I do have some updates on that property too, if you'd like to hear. So Ms. Dozeman and Mr. Matthews, you brought this forward. Did you have anything to add?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Patrick for really kind of taking the lead on the city staff side of this. And he's been attending some meetings with Rocky Mountain Bottling and acting as kind of liaison between our departments, our staff, and them. And you and I have been in conversations together. To give you a little background, and I know you've heard some of this before, but you know, they came to us a year or so ago to ask for some tax breaks, money back, tax breaks because EPA was forcing them to make some changes with their furnaces. And they decided to go from two small furnaces to one large. In talking to them, when they made their change, for whatever reason, their engineers decided that Jefferson County codes were in force in their property, and Jefferson County codes exclude a noise ordinance for industrial site. I'm not sure, I'll have to work out with Mr. Dahl how that works out with what can leak off the site. But so they actually have designed their facility to work right up to the limits of what OSHA considers to be hazardous to your health, noise limits. About 1974, the EPA tried, used to regulate it, and then in 1974, the EPA decided that they turned that over to local communities and governments to regulate noise ordinances. So they kind of stepped back out of the picture. But we do have state ordinances that also might apply, as Mr. Dahl has mentioned once before. It appears to me, and we can have the experts talk about this, but most of the codes that I've seen have residential levels of noise that would be allowable somewhere in the 50 to 55 decibel range. And I would remind you that this is not, that decibels are not linear. Seventy decibels are not twice the amount of 35. So, and that the danger level is 80. And I have actually measured up there north of the plant at one guy's, one neighbor's front porch, 78 decibels. So imagine living through that 24/7. I also, Mr. Goff, for your information, I was over at Pearson, all the way over to Pearson and Quail. And that's right on the east side of where Arvada's developing there. And then we, and I was there Sunday afternoon, and it was about 70 decibels over there. So I had not heard it there before. So apparently, I don't know what they're doing there, if they're trying to do some directional things or whatever, but it was actually affecting the neighborhood there. And I expected to see some people from that neighborhood here tonight. So that's the issue, and we have to address it, I think, citywide while we're doing this and not just, of course, look at the one neighborhood. But we have to take some action for the health and welfare of our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Ms. Davis?
So, you know, I agree with the situation at hand. I know we're not talking about that specifically, but I, they do need to do something. But I think, I think some of the things that I want to make sure, as staff looks at this, because I do believe we all need to, need to look at it. But I think one of the things is, is because, and I don't know what this is called, light industrial or industrial, but I think going back to some comments that were made, I think that it'd be different if it's light industrial and all around them is light industrial. But I think that, you know, because there's residential around them, that they should, you know, at least if I'm across the street, then that sound barrier should be reaching me at a residential rate, not at an industrial rate. And I think that that's something that we need to make sure that we put in, in the policy is that the code is, is specific to also the surrounding areas. So, okay, to, you know, let's pretend to the north of them is all industrial, then if the noise is a little louder to the north, then, okay, because that's industrial. But if right across the street from you is three, in three different directions is commercial than, or residential, then you should be held to that. So I would definitely like to, when we discuss this policy or adopt it, I'd like it to be that they have to be held to the zone areas that are within a certain range of them. So that's one of mine. And then I guess my next question, and I don't know if we can do this or not, but again, you know, it's interesting because we, you know, looking at some of these policies and some of the comparisons, you know, they talk about fireworks or a muffler going by or something. And that's one thing, because it comes and goes. But this is like a constant, you know, noise. And I don't know if there's a way that that could be looked at too. I mean, it's one thing when you get a "whoom" going by, but oh my God, if that was 24/7. I would thank you all for coming and presenting and being as patient and nice and thoughtful because I think I would be going like whack-a-doodle. So, so those are just a couple of my comments is, you know, ongoing, and then also neighboring communities as we draft this new ordinance.
Neighborhood zoning districts, yep, yep. Yeah, and both of those issues are usually addressed in the different type of ordinances that we've researched, specifically your last issue of intermittent noise.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think some codes say, you know, up to 15 minutes is maybe allowed at a certain decibel level. And I think they even use the word shrill, if the noise is a shrill level, right? So it's, yeah, it's, it's not easy to, this isn't a cut and dry ordinance to write because you have to deal with all those things, and you have to deal with ambient noise, where you talked about with mufflers, and you have to deal with wind. And if it's windy that day, the sound carries differently. So there's a lot of interesting things that you have to take into account.
Yeah. And the other thing I would support is the quantitative aspect versus kind of the...
Instead of qualitative.
Qualitative.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Thank you. Can you refresh our memory? We discussed this noise ordinance or ordinances, I think, at length several years ago, maybe five years ago. I think it was related to 40, some activities at 44th Avenue. And I think we discussed a lot of these things at that point, including decibel levels and monitoring and distances and things like that. So if you recall, because...
I do, I do remember.
I think it's worth just...
Mr. Goff probably remembers.
Just bringing it up, that wasn't very long ago that we, that we really went in. And we, and we didn't, and there were some things that we did do, I think.
There was one amendment we made that I'm aware of.
And some things that we didn't.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious to get a little bit of a background, just for memory's sake.
Yeah, it was for a business on 44th that was a violator of noise and causing some consternation in the neighborhood. And we looked at it, we brought back similar information and research, and we considered going to more quantitative. The council at that point did not want to go to a quantitative. There's different reasons for that. It's also difficult, it can happen, but there's a training issue with the police department. You have to have calibrated, you know, you can't just use your cell phone necessarily to go, you can, but it's not necessarily 100% correct all the time. And you have to have the right machinery and equipment and such. So at that time, council decided not to. I think one change they did make at that point, our code did not allow, required that there was a, a, what's the term? A police officer could not be the complainant. Is that the right language, Jerry? You had to, there had to be somebody, a citizen that had to actually file the complaint. But I changed, we changed the code to add, and it's in your memo, I think it's a section, yeah, it's that lax section, that a police officer could act as the complainant in a noise situation. Now, I think that was the only change we made. In that situation, there was a lot of mediation between the neighborhood and the violator at that time. And there was some changes made on, it was because of music and such at the business. So a lot of that was handled through mediation. And did you think of any, remember anything else, Jerry, on that?
Mr. Pond?
Okay, well, thank you for that. And I recall a lot of that. And I think it's worthwhile to talk about this. And I think as evidenced by that history, as well as the several examples that are a little bit, you know, that cover a lot of different things, try to make distinctions and try to, try to do it. It seems like we're going to spend, or should spend quite a bit of time in order to talk about this, figure it out. And I think that's right. So just my caution is, is that, that we have an, we have a situation that, you know, and how to, how to deal with that and be expeditious about that to the extent that we can, while not maybe essentially hurrying what otherwise is a pretty complicated set of things to think about inside of, inside of code. So how to, I just, I don't know that I have an answer. I'm just suggesting that we figure out a way to make sure that we're not kind of combining things, that we're taking the time that we need, but we're not, not letting, you know, one problem kind of drive the whole thing or languish too long. So I know that's a lot, but I just, I know, since we've been through this, I know that this takes a while. And there's a, and once you start getting into it, it's, it's not, it's not linear.
Yeah, no, and you're 100% correct. And there is the media need, and we need to get this, we need to provide some relief for our constituents up there and as soon as possible. And as Mr. Matthews said, we, we have, have had several meetings and continue to reach out to Rocky Mountain and get updates. And they, I believe they are honestly trying to work on this and get it fixed. They've made some short-term fixes recently. The issue with, I think the crux of the issue at this point with Rocky Mountain, with that specific problem, is they're trying to fix the problem, but they want to know what they're fixing to. They want to make sure that if they're going to spend tons of, you know, a lot of money to get this fixed, they want to know, you know, if our current code is, because it's still, there's still going to be noise up there, right? Even when they fix it, as some of the speakers said, there was always noise, but at this point, it's unbearable. So if they make these fixes, are, is that going to be acceptable to the community? So it's either we set a decibel level and that they work towards that to make sure that their fixes keep them under a certain decibel level, or if we keep a more qualitative code, is it reasonable? Is then, is what they got, what they fixed it to still reasonable or not? That's, that's what they want. And they're, they're being honest and I think sincere about that. They want to make sure that they fix it to what we want in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Peter.
Actually, Mr. Goff answered the questions I have at the moment.
Took that right out of your, right out of your mouth. Okay. Ms. Dozen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to say that I appreciate that we're going to take a more measurable, quantitative approach, and that is what I would like to see. And the fact that we have an expert that can kind of help navigate this gives me a lot of hope that we could expedite this process and hopefully have some relief for our constituents. Because I think that that recording really spoke volumes as to the issue that's going on. And I know that taking a recording on your cell phone doesn't necessarily equate to maybe a scientific method of measuring, but it does give us an idea of what you're experiencing on a day-to-day basis. And that, in my mind, is quite unbearable. So I think that we are all in agreement that we need to see a more quantitative, measurable ordinance. So I'd like to, you need to say something, Ms. Hoppy? Yes?
Ms. Hoppy?
Sorry, it sounded like you were heading for a consensus, and I just wanted to say something real fast. What I didn't see in all of these examples was a hybrid, so to speak. And so what I was wondering is, no, no. You know, if we looked at something like quantitative ordinances in places like a commercial, like heavier commercial, light industrial and industrial, but then we still had, you know, the more qualitative in residential areas, mixed-use zoning, mixed-use zoning wasn't in any of these attachments. And so I'm, I'm just wondering how people feel about being able to do kind of a hybrid and having, you know, something with more teeth. Now here's why I think it would be helpful. Because sometimes in a residential area, something that may be like 55 decibels, being that's the code, something at 35 decibels might be considered unusual, unnecessary, or unreasonable. And so if we, you know, if we go to that, then we don't have any, we have no ground to stand on in a residential area. But then also, we know that commercial, light industrial, and industrial are typically louder. And so we can set those, and then we can leave some of our residential and mixed-use areas more up to the responding officer. And then also for training-wise, if we, you know, that way we wouldn't necessarily have to train all of our staff on it. We could have an expert. And so then if a complaint comes in, in an area, then the one expert, instead of everybody being trained on it, and the one piece of equipment that we would need could handle those situations. So that's just kind of what I was thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Pond.
I sense the consensus coming, and that's fine. I'll, I'll vote for it. But I'll tell you that my caution again is that quantitative is not, is not necessarily an easy, just an easy solution. And I think you can see by some of these charts that most of the light industrial and industrial are at 70, 75, 70 overnight in these, in these things. That's not that far from where we're at. And, you know, I think as we struggle to put a number to this, if we were to put something, you know, way below that, you know, you don't, you just don't even see it. So I think, I think we might, and I know that that's one of the things that we struggled with last time. So it's, I'm fine talking about it. I agree that there may need to be some hybrid. I think that just numbers, numbers, you know, on a meter don't necessarily kind of assure that it's going to be something that can be administered or even solve the, the problem exactly. So, you know, I just, I just want to say that as, as we kind of get into the discussion, I think it's a little bit more complex.
Thank you. Any other discussion before we look for a consensus? Ms. Dozen?
Patrick, how confident are you that we could put together something that would both be quantitative and potentially qualitative in the respective, that's going to be able to cover all of our city's needs as opposed to just...
Well, I think we could look at it, maybe Andrews can, if he's willing, could speak to some of these questions. But, you know, in Ms. Hoppy's example, I think, the first thing I thought about was, you know, if we're quantitative in industrial but qualitative in the residential, the residential is right adjacent to this industrial. And, you know, you still have to take into account, I think what Ms. Davis said, is the separation of these different zone districts, right? And how far, like our current code, I think, is, it's like a 25-foot limit, right? That if the noise, it goes beyond 25 feet to, to a reasonable person, is that, you know, I can't remember what the language, something to their sensitivities, right? So I think you maybe look at stuff like that on distance between the zone districts. Like, yeah, we have this industrial zone property right in the middle, and the residential grew up around it. But there's still a buffer between those two properties. So by the time the noise gets to the residential, is it down to 50, right? And, and again, that's what I think Rocky Mountain is trying to work towards, so that it's, it might be, as George said, it might be 70 on, on-site, but once it gets across the street to the residential, it should be buffered enough that maybe it's, it's down to closer in the 50s. That's, so I, you know, maybe there's a hybrid. I don't know. Andrew, do you have any comments? You just want to stay silent for now? You don't have to.
Mr. Matthews?
If you'll notice in reading through some of these, you know, they do spend quite a bit of time talking about, for instance, sirens, you know, fireplace, fire and police sirens are exempt. And, you know, they do try to add some reasonable qualitative. No one's going to go out and measure a fire or an ambulance siren and say, oh, that's breaking the law because it's, that's be qualitative, that's to be expected, and it's loud for a reason. And the same thing with, you know, they exempt fireworks if you have occasional fireworks or something. So there is, most of these codes have some kind of hybrid built into them. And most of them have some, some, in some situations, say, you know, measured 25 feet from the property line or something like that. I think it's just up to staff and the experts to help us out with determining what those variations should or could be.
Ms. Dozen?
So I think it'll, I think it would be really difficult to kind of talk about specifics until we have something drafted in front of us that is unique to our community and encompasses all of our various zoning districts. So at this time, I would like to try to gain a consensus for staff to draft an ordinance, a noise ordinance, to bring back to council so that we can discuss it at a study session and see if that's something that we could...
Do we have consensus on that? We do? Does that give you...
Yeah, did you, I don't know, did you want to make it any more? I think I heard that, I don't know if you want to make it a little more specific, that there's quantitative measurements, but also maybe looking at, well, maybe looking at a hybrid approach, I think is, is that kind of what you want?
I definitely want quantitative. And I think that we've all kind of spoken to the nature of that issue. And whether that looks like within a radius of certain, I mean, do you want to speak to specifics about that?
I think we can come up with some examples.
You know, I think we need to look at both, look at both types because we've got other kinds of activities. I mean, I, you know, selfishly, I look at my, you know, the music on my patio. How is, how is that going to be affected by the ordinance? And I, you know, so we're looking for something that does a lot of different things. So we want it all. Would it be fair to just, can we put some kind of a timeline on this? That how long do you think it would take to get something back to us so that all my residents up there know how long, you know? If they know it's for a month, though, they'll not go necessarily crazy. But if they think it's six months or a year, then the pitchforks will...
No, it won't be six months or a year. I think, I think prob, maybe a couple of months, maybe two, six weeks to eight weeks, I'd say, but...
I'm not going to hold it to something specific, but I'd like to make sure we have some kind of a reasonable estimate.
We, we'll, we'll keep it moving. And, you know, maybe before, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, if we, before we close out on this item, I'll give a quick update on, on Rocky Mountain. I did get some information today from the new plant manager up there that they have received bids from two contractors. I think I mentioned that at one of our last study sessions, that Prax Air is the company that put in the oxygenator. And they came up with some proposed solutions to fix some of the problems. And they have, they got two bids from two contractors, and Rocky Mountain is evaluating those now. So they're hoping that, you know, maybe even before we get an ordinance finalized, they, they'll maybe get some of these problems fixed, hopefully. And a couple of weeks ago, they made some small adjustments already, and they believe it's made some, some improvements. I'm not sure, based on what we heard tonight from the citizens, but they've made some adjustments to the equipment. But that, that's the update of where they're at on, yes, Leah?
So on that, I mean, has there been any mediation between Rocky Mountain Bottle Company and like the neighbors? I mean, have there been discussions?
I asked Rocky Mountain to make sure that they, they communicate better with the neighborhood. And we gave them a list of addresses that surround the property. They did send a letter out, initial letter, just to say, hey, there's a problem, we're working on it. They didn't give much details in that letter. I'm going to ask them to send, once they have a solution and a timeframe, to send another letter saying this is what we're planning to do.
So I just have one question. So it sounds like, you know, a lot of the neighbors are saying, well, when I moved here, it was here, and we knew there was noise, but it just wasn't as bad. Do we know what that was before? Because I just think it's interesting. So if the bottling company's like, well, how far do we have to go? I mean, I think my answer to them was, go back to where you were. You know, I mean, and I wonder if they have that, you know, don't, we're not going to find a happy medium to the worst case and where you were, go back to where you were kind of thing. I mean, I, do we have any kind of measurement of where that was?
Yeah, they, they did pre-measurements before they put this new, this new information or equipment in, and I, I don't have it with me. I believe it was in the 60s, at least on-site, the decibel levels. And now it's over 70s off-site even. So it was lower. They saw a bump, but...
So I'm just wondering, in the meantime, if we just say, go back to where you were? I mean, if they're sitting, I don't want them to wait two months to do anything...
Yeah.
Till we have this. But it's like, ideally, we're leaning towards going back to where you were because the neighbors knew that, you know, that was reasonable, and that's a good starting point.
That gives you the direction you're looking for.
It does. Thank you.
Excellent. Let us move to item number two. This is the 58, 52nd Avenue, annexation. And do you have a report on this?
We do. Mr. Westberg and staff put together, I think, I thought, a pretty good memo. So Mark is going to just give a, a quick update of where we're at, and note, but no slides, no PowerPoint, so shouldn't be too long.
We're making progress? Please, Mr. Westberg?
Yeah, so in our discussions with Jefferson County, it sort of came to all of our realization that they're in a budget situation, as you've heard a lot about tonight. And one of the things that they're doing is they're sort of, I won't say washing their hands of, but they're trying to prioritize the transportation dollars they have on the things that are, that are wholly in the county and on major thoroughfares and things like that. So roads like 52nd Avenue are not a priority for them at this point. They withdrew their funding earlier this year, I believe it was in January. We got notice from them that they were no longer going to participate as funding partners in this project. And in our ongoing discussions with him about future maintenance and things like that, they've indicated that they would struggle to maintain all the new stuff we're putting in out there. They've estimated... Um, they've estimated in 20 years, they would spend $40,000 maintaining the little two-lane asphalt road that's there today. And if we put in storm sewer and sidewalks and lights and amenity zones and all those things, they're, they're just not going to be able to maintain those. And our concern is we don't want to spend, um, all of our money and Arvada's money to have things go by the wayside. And so, um, since we are most contiguous to the stretches that are in Jeffco, Arvada's got two little pieces of, of 52nd in their jurisdiction. Um, the thought was that we would annex basically the north side of the road that's in Jefferson County now and make those a part of Wheat Ridge so that we can control, um, how they're built, what's built there, and then also be able to, to maintain those in the way that we want the entryway to our, to our Ward TOD area to be maintained. And so in looking at our schedules and stuff, we, we looked at what the impact of doing the annexation was. Jefferson County's been really supportive of annexing and removing that, that future liability of, of maintenance from, from their, their roles. And so they have offered to do the surveying, which they've started, um, prepare all the annexation documents and get those to us. And so, um, the, the schedule I've put together right now has them submitting those to us on October 4th, pending on how things go tonight. Um, on October 28th would be the council meeting where we would basically accept that annexation and allow it to proceed forward. And then on December 9th, we'd do first reading and then in January 13th, I believe, um, in 2020, we would do second reading. So that's the schedule that we have before. It's, it's a really aggressive schedule, but we're trying to, to not slow this down. If, if we proceed with the annexation, then Jefferson County's not going to acquire any permits or any other kind of sign-offs from them, even if we start working on things early. We're already starting to work on utility relocations up there. Um, the other big thing is, is they'll allow us to go out to bid because, again, we're annexing, so they don't really care anymore. So we'd be able to go out to bid concurrent with the annexation. So in that January 13th meeting, we would also bring the construction contract to you. This puts us about six weeks behind the last schedule I did before all this came up. Um, but that's the most aggressive we can do. There's also a planning commission meeting, um, sometime before the first reading where they would actually hear the rezoning because whenever we take something in the city, we have to zone it. So part of the action council will be taking it first and second reading would also be zoning that right-of-way because everything has to have a zone. And our thought right now is we would just basically zone it the same as what's zoned to the south. So if it's MUTOD, then we would zone that section MUTOD. There are some areas that are industrial zoned, so that section of the road would be zoned industrial. So that as you're driving through the street from east to west or west to east, those areas would all be zoned the same. So, um, that in a nutshell is sort of where we are with all this unless, um, council has any questions or if Jerry or Patrick want to add something else to my very brief little conversation there.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Mark, I appreciate that you guys have put the rush on this and come up with a solution. I do have to ask, I assume we had not gotten to the point of having an IGA with Jeffco on this?
That was on the agenda for tonight, but it got pulled because of this annexation.
They were, they were party to the original IGA that we did back in January, um, but they pulled out at the last minute, so we scrambled rewrite the IGA. And that's when we were looking at just possibly building our half of the street and leaving the north side alone. And Arvada very graciously said, you know what, really, we, we think this street's important to both our jurisdictions, even though we don't have a lot of it, we're willing to pay half. Um, because they recognize a lot of their new residents that they're going to have over in, and I'm going to mess up the name, it starts with an H. Haskin Station. I keep wanting to say Hans. Um, are probably going to use this to get toward road to go north or south. Um, so, so they recognize the importance of having this. And also they've got a lot of residents that aren't contiguous to 52nd, but they're up there, that want to have a better way to walk to Drake. So they've, they've been great partners in this whole thing.
I appreciate the efforts that you're going through and I, I fully support them.
Uh, Mr. Westburg, we're, we're only talking about annexing the street and sidewalk and whatever appurtenances are to the street and sidewalk. We're not talking about annexing the, the private property that's Jefferson County north of there.
Yes, it's just the right-of-way only and the right-of-way that's Jefferson County. So there's a piece of Arvada at Vance, I think, and there's a piece of Arvada at Tabor. And it's just this, where, where the intersection is plus one property either side, that's the only parts that are not Jeffco on the north side besides the stuff we have on the far east end up against the Arvada boundary.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or questions? Do we have a consensus of council to move forward with this proposal that, um, staff has brought to us? We have, uh, consensus to move forward on the proposal that you brought to us and, and go build the road?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Um, that is, uh, that concludes our business on the, um, study session. Is now 9:52 and we are going to re-convene our recessed council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, could you give me time to change the tape?
Yes, ma'am. And we will take a short recess while the clerk changes the recording device.
On NCRS 24-6-4024B to receive legal advice concerning pending litigation on McLeod. I further, further move to return to the open meeting at the close of the executive session for the purpose of taking any formal action deemed necessary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Dozeman.
Davis.
Or Ms. Davis, excuse me. Um, would the clerk please poll the council?
What if we said no?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are we going to stay here for this, for this meeting? Is there any reason we cannot...
My view on political campaign events is those are allowed to be private, because they're not public business in the sense they're not business of the council. Having said that, where you have three or more incumbents at such a meeting, the trick is just making sure the discussion doesn't end up inadvertently becoming discussion about pending matters or just current issues. The difficulty with making that distinction ahead of time is just impossible, including the public perception of the same. And my uniform recommendation where anything's kind of on the line is post it, because you spend so much less time describing that you just posted it, and you spend a lot of time saying why you didn't have to. I believe that, you know, you're allowed to have political conversations, even when there's more than three of you in a room, if it's purely political around an election, not something that ends up on the dais. But the public's ability to distinguish between that conversation and references you might make to rezoning, or density, or noise for that matter, and gee, that does come up on your agenda, is impossible to parse through. So while you're hearing me say, I think under the law that can be allowed to be an unposted event, I'm saying in practice, and I checked with Jeff Wilson on that, our local open meetings guru, and he said, you post it, because then you've protected yourself from those kind of claims.
What was the responsibility to be in this case to post it?
Probably the city clerk's office, and I typically do that, where I am asked, I'm told, hey, there's this some meeting that's going to happen. Usually, I'll help with creating a notice that says, there's this event, the three or more council members may be there, there won't be a quorum, there's not going to be any, no business of the council being conducted, and instead, the event is for this other purpose. So kind of describing the truth, which is that it's for another purpose, and no public actions will be taken. And really, the posting is being made in an excess of caution.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe had a question.
Yeah, so if there is a posting, does that in essence turn the private event into a public event?
If it's posted as an open meeting, yes. Yes?
Okay, are we ready to return to the regular meeting?
Uh...
Okay, well, I didn't really, I didn't really get us into the regular meeting, so it's all right. Is there any business to come before the, before the council? The meeting is adjourned.